Call the order.
All right.
Welcome, everybody. Grand Forks City Council Meeting, August 17, 2020. We've got three weeks until the next one, so we've got a packed agenda today. Roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weather.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Dean. All right, we have a call.
Thank you. 1.2 Mayor's Announcements. We actually lost a city employee last week, passed away from a heart attack. So Bennett Devlin, public transportation team for 16 years, he was a mechanic. I believe he had a heart attack and was on life support for a little while, but it's always tough to lose somebody. Our prayers are with his family and those that work closely with him in the public transportation department. So prayers out to Bennett Devlin and his family. I want to do a couple of thank yous. We did a couple of tours this week with Keith Lund, so I want to thank Keith Lund for coming out with me. We toured PS Industries, so I want to thank the President Cory Mellon and the manager, Grant Satrum. And then we went out to see Philadelphia Macaroni, and I got taken around by Tony Pierce, their plant manager out there. And then this morning, I met with Cabela's management teams and Darren Muscha, and I know they're East Grand Forks company, but we're one community, and we talked about the retail landscape in Grand Forks. And one more thank you to the Grand Forks City employees. We've continued to work and operate under this environment. I think the staff has really had a sense of duty and shown up for work and worked hard and kept the services going. That's all I have for announcements. Let's move on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 is Home Ownership Rates in This Town, whether it's a result of the flood or us being a college town, have really, the rates are really low, and I think that's led to some poverty issues, some lower wage issues, and it's something that I think we want to start to combat. I was really excited, the Community Land Trust found some federal money that we can compare with and hopefully expand the program. We've had, done a lot of work. We've met with realtors, with the land trust, with bankers, with developers, with some mortgage brokers. Right now, we're kind of currently maxing out some of our state incentives with abatements and other stuff, so we've been looking outside the box to find a way to sort of make housing more affordable and put more people in houses. So I also want to thank Senator Scott Meyer, he did a great job with the state helping us out on this program and seeing how we get something done. With that, I'm going to, it's in your document, I don't know if they can pull it up on the screen, but if you want to start, I'll have Emily come up and talk about the land trust side and what they're going to be able to do for us. So Emily, thanks.
Thank you for that introduction, Mayor Botenski. So to introduce myself, I'm Emily Contreras, I'm the Executive Director of Grand Forks Community Land Trust. I'm here this evening to speak to you about our Home Buyer Opportunity Program. As Mayor Botenski mentioned, our program is federally funded, so there isn't a lot that we can change as far as the GFCLT program goes, but we've had some really great discussions about how we can pair with the city to expand that program to not only serve low-income households, but create a similar program that would serve moderate-income households in Grand Forks. And that's where the partnership with the city would come into play. We've been, as Grand Forks Community Land Trust, we've been serving lower-income households with affordable home ownership programming since 2013, but in the last year, we've decided to make the transition to providing down payment and closing cost assistance because we were finding that our acquisition rehab dollars that also came from HUD were just a much more arduous, lengthy process, and we weren't able to serve the number of families that we wanted to serve. So we've made the shift to down payment and closing cost assistance, but with that comes an additional requirement that the program must serve any home buyers in the community who qualify, not just those who are purchasing CLT homes. That's why we started our conversations with the city and why we've started to look at expanding the program up to 120% AMI or wherever the city feels something would work. So to give a basic introduction to the program, hopefully you will have a larger version on your screens there so that you can read it. As I mentioned, the CLT's program would serve under 80% area median income, which for an individual is $49,500, for a family of four, that goes up to $70,700. You'll notice that the maximum subsidy per household is $70,000, which sounds like it's a lot of money, but when you're working with a household that's only a single income earner and is in that $40,000, $40,000 to $50,000 range, if you look at the market that we have today, it's very difficult to find a home under $200,000 in Grand Forks. Therefore, the gap that we have to fill is typically between, they probably qualify somewhere in between $130,000 and $150,000. That's where we came up with the maximum subsidy amount of $70,000. That stated, each household will be individually underwritten, and they have to pay 20% of their gross monthly income toward their payment. So if they don't need that $70,000, they won't get $70,000. If you have a higher-income family that can afford a mortgage of, say, $170,000, and they're buying a $200,000 home, their subsidy is only $30,000. So that comes down to me doing the math, working with the lender to find that happy medium. That's something that we at the Community Land Trust have been doing from the beginning. So it is a detailed process, but that's what we're accustomed to. As far as the other regulations go, we do have those debt-to-income minimums and maximums that are required, 20% minimum, we go up to 30% maximum so that we are ensuring that homes are affordable for households as well. And then as far as the maximum home prices, HUD restricts that for us. So the maximum home price that we can serve through our program is $221,000 for an existing home or $242,000 for a new construction home in Grand Forks. Twin homes, row homes are eligible, so we think that that's where new construction would come into play as far as these go. Single-family homes, it's not realistic that we would serve a single-family new construction home in Grand Forks today, although that's something we would love to see in the future. The program would be structured as a forgivable loan, and there are covenant periods, and you see those are based on the subsidy amount. A five-year covenant if the subsidy is $15,000 or less, a 10-year covenant if the subsidy is between $15,000 and $40,000, and a 15-year covenant if the subsidy is between $40,000 and $70,000. If the home is sold in that covenant period, the full amount of subsidy does have to be repaid, but the household is able to keep the appreciation on the home. So it's still, it's a good deal no matter what, they're getting something really fruitful from the program. And the bottom line for us at the CLT is that, like all of the homes that we have in our portfolio before, because we are serving these low-income households, we genuinely are creating homeowners from households who didn't believe that home ownership was within their reach in the past. So with this low-income program, you're really going to see people buying who otherwise would have rented or moved elsewhere because that's where they can afford a home. That's certainly our program. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
No, let's let Meredith go first. You just hang out if we have a couple of questions at the end. So essentially, the city is going to be trying to pair this both to help the land trust be able to move forward with this, but I think in the first year, the land trust had $560,000 available for the program after the soft costs, but we expect probably around a million or more going forward, so it could be a very helpful program. Meredith Richards was going to come up and speak on the city's portion of this.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Emily walked through the federally funded portion, and a few of you may remember, many years ago, the city offered an American Dream program that used federal funds that I administered. So it's a great program. The program that we're looking at in terms of the city side is to assist those households that are, that is more considered middle income, whereas HUD funds are restricted to households that are considered low to moderate income. So the table, the second page kind of gives you some options of what those income limits would look like at 120% or full area median income and 120%. Just in terms of a city program, we have lots of flexibility in terms of how we set that up. With the federally funded program, it's very prescribed. So what we've kind of laid out in this format here is just a lot of options. At $10,000 as a maximum, that could take the form, applicant's choice, down payment assistance, or possibly a voucher that would help them purchase, you know, new appliances, new carpet. We had a kind of a mini focus group meeting last week, and we heard that, you know, there's some buyers out there that would be interested, but perhaps the home that they can afford needs a lot of work. And this opportunity to get, you know, a $10,000 downstroke on some of those improvements would be something that would push them out of their apartment and into home ownership. So we're clearly at the early stages here, looking for feedback on how you would like to see that structured, who you would want to assist, but having been on the federally funded side, I know it's a great program, and you can get a lot of people that are very grateful for the help, but you have very little leeway in how to structure that program outside what the federal government tells you. The city-funded side, it's kind of, it's up to us to make it work for what is needed in Grand Forks. So with that, I'm certainly open for any questions, or turn it back to you, Mayor.
Yeah, I got one question for Emily first. If the city isn't able to participate, does that make your, I mean, well, you know, we're there to help supplement the program, but the city isn't involved, does that take away your ability to do this program?
It does not impact our grant for this year. However, federal grants do always appreciate a local match, so since we do have to apply on an annual basis, it would look much better for us if we have some local money contributing as a match.
Okay. Well, let's open up to any council members that have some questions. I know we have about three weeks, and then we can, before this would come back, so we've got some time. President Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Emily. It's a great program that you're putting together. Thank you for working on it and working with the city. Do you, when you say it's good to have local match, is $5,000 considered local match?
It's better than nothing, but generally, what they look for is 25% in total match, but there are some other pieces that we can bring to the table. So it's, I don't expect the city to provide the full match, but more than $5,000 would certainly help. And like I said, it's a grant process, so not having a match doesn't mean that we don't get it, but obviously, it improves the chances significantly.
Sure. How, do you have any idea how many of your, I can't remember, $560,000, how many people do you think that will help our home buyers?
So we, that'll really depend on the income level, but I estimate that we'll be between 10 and 15 per year at this about $560,000 amount, which doesn't, I know, it seems, it seems like that's a small number, but because of the lower incomes and the high home prices, there's a big gap that has to be filled. Our market right now doesn't have much under $200,000, but if we were to see that change, I think the pandemic has impacted our market. If there were more homes that came available in that $170,000 to $200,000 range, I think you'd see a big shift there, where our average would go down to maybe $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 per household rather than higher.
For the city attorney, through discussions with the mayor, the thought process was, these funds would come out of 2163 or Economic Development Funds. Legally, can we use, can we use city taxpayer dollars to provide home ownership opportunities or down payment opportunities?
President Sandy, we have already started the process of reviewing that very issue. We believe, just preliminarily, there is, it appears to be some opportunities to do so, and so we're looking at that as we speak, started that process already, and assuming that the council wants to move forward with it, then we start reviewing the process for implementation of the particular program for the city.
Meredith, again, thank you as well for working on this, on this exciting opportunity for future home buyers in town. Can you help me understand, how are we coming up with the criteria? Why $10,000 versus $25,000 or $2,500?
Well, there has to be a starting point. As I said, it's a city-funded program, and so we can craft it in whatever way we think is going to be most effective. $10,000 is a lot of money, yet if you're looking at home prices in Grand Forks, we're really looking at this kind of pushing people who are pretty much ready for home ownership but haven't made the plunge or maybe need just a little push further. So it's not unlike Emily's program, which might get people who would otherwise have no chance at home ownership in Grand Forks into a home. This is more of an incentive to, as Mayor Botenski said, boost our home ownership rate. And I mean, depending on the option you choose, it also has a nice kind of COVID, buy local, stimulate the local economy aspect with that voucher that would also help us on our sales tax proceeds if buyers chose to use that option. So again, whatever we think is most effective for what we're trying to do and for, you know, the good of Grand Forks, we can set that up. Emily doesn't have that sort of latitude in designing her program, but we do.
I recall, I was part of the team that said that enough is enough with the American Dream program because it was not being utilized, and all of the federal restrictions on it made it so that no matter how much we talked about it, it wasn't going anywhere, so...
Exactly. After the market changed, after the 2008 housing bubble, it went from being a very well-used program, hate to age myself, but, you know, 15 years ago, to something that it just, the federal requirements just would not fit with the loan product, loan products that the private market was offered.
I think, I, just in general, I'm not a real big fan of using tax dollars to pay for down payments for homes for people. I am a big fan of trying to figure out how to get people into houses, and so my mind isn't made up on this, but I think that through discussion with the council, there's hopefully a happy medium in here somewhere. I am looking for information, though, knowing that I think demographics of home buyers has changed, and we had a very nice conversation here prior to the council meeting, and the mayor was educating me a little bit on the percentage of home ownership in Grand Forks versus the state and the country, and it does seem as though our home ownership is lower. I attribute a lot of that to 97 flood, losing 830 starter homes in the Lincoln Park and Reeves neighborhoods. And so I believe if we had those homes, that those percentages would change dramatically. My, my, I don't know what term I want to use, my concern, my, actually, I'm inquisitive as to know how we can figure out, because we know that Danny Weigl's generation isn't buying houses the way my generation was, or, I can't find anybody here that's older than I am, so, more than my generation, Mr. Weber's generation, thank you. Mr. Weber's generation and my generation were home buyers. We were considerably more home buyers than Ms. Dockler's generation or Mr. Weigl's. And so is, I just questioned, do we need a program? I, I'd love to know more, and maybe this was a question directly for the mayor, probably not, just in general. Do we have evidence that says that even if we do a program, we're actually going to get people to utilize it? I think we all want, again, I think we all want more home ownership in town. Any way we can get people into owning homes is a good thing, as the mayor pointed out earlier, to get people to invest in our community, which will help them stay here. I'm just hoping we're not setting ourselves up for a long battle to put something in place that then nobody uses.
Yeah, and I think the beauty of this is a pilot program. We're going to test it out. If it doesn't work, it takes, you know, it takes one meeting to shut it down. So we looked at doing $100,000, I think, for the rest of the year, and then $300,000 a year after that, and if we get the final details and it doesn't work, well, I'm sure you'll be the first to let us know.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Any other?
If you have suggestions about what metrics would indicate success, you know, we're certainly open to that. We've talked about it, but we certainly haven't come up with any sort of hard and fast rules of, at this level, it's a win, at another level, not so much, so.
Again, where to come?
Are any other comments?
I have just a quick question. Sorry. I just wanted to...
Is that Kyle?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Councilmember Quan. Appreciate it, yeah. So the two uses, just to be clear, are down payment assistance or a sort of voucher or structure to improve the home that they're purchasing? Is that the only two? Is that, is that what you guys are guiding right now?
Yeah, or closing costs, but there's kind of been a shift in who pays the closing costs. In the past, it's been the buyers, and now it's trending towards the sellers more often, but that would also be an option.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, that's my only question for now.
Councilman Weber.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Contreras, so at various times, there have been federal dollars to support home buying, especially for first-time home buyers. Are these new programs that you're getting right now, the $70,000 possibility for a family of four?
So the funding source is the same as it has been in the past, as far as coming from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, home funds. The difference, the difference for us is just that we use the acquisition rehab approach in the past, and that just took too long, and we weren't able to make the impact we wanted to make. The down payment closing cost assistance can move as fast as people are in purchase agreements. So if we had $5 million, we could serve however many people that...
Acquisition renovation, this is when you were buying older homes, fixing them up, and then trying to sell them to CLT customers?
Correct.
And this would be helping any, well, qualifying home buyer to get into any home that also qualifies, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and that includes the CLT homes. So that's an important point from the CLT's perspective. We're not giving up what we do. What this will actually open up is it will allow us to acquire and rehab homes through other financing models, but then provide the subsidy at the end. So just that acquisition rehab process will still continue, but move much faster without all of the regulation that's necessary.
So this is a new part of the CLT mission beyond just CLT homes? You're helping connect home buyers with other homes, other than just CLT properties?
Correct. An expansion of the mission, I would say.
How long has that been going on for? Is that...
This is really something that we've just considered over the last year for the sake of serving additional households.
How many were served last year?
Well, actually, last year, we had one, one project where we ran into lead-based paint, so it took us the entire year to rehab that one home, and the project was $50,000 instead of $2,000. So that's, that's exactly why we decided we needed to go with down payment closing cost assistance rather than acquisition rehab.
And you mentioned the benefit of local match. There's been no local match up to this point, or has there been?
Not on our grant applications that have gone through the state. The city did provide a number of infill lots to the Community Land Trust, which we developed actually new construction homes on. That would have been in 2014 through 2016. So the city has provided funds or lots in that case, which work as a match as well, but on our recent applications, we have not had local match.
The infill lots, that was the early history of the CLT. This is a new approach.
Correct.
Currently, there has been no city match to help attract these federal funds?
Right.
Okay. And so Mayor, you've just mentioned, the intention is maybe 10 this year, up to 30 next year as a pilot process. One thing that's plagued us in the past when we try to make housing more affordable is we run into unintended consequences that result in windfalls for developers or bankers. I'm not really seeing how that would happen in this case, but it's something that I'd want to keep an eye out for. As far as a gift, a city attorney, other communities do similar things where they provide some sort of support to attract home buyers, so this is not out of, there's precedence for this, yes?
We've, as part of our review process, Councilman Weber, we did look, not just, we looked outside of the state of North Dakota and various communities outside, and that was part of our review process that we've already started to undertake.
I know I've heard you discuss in the past, there's concerns about the city can't make gifts to people, but this type of thing does seem possible. You're looking into it now.
In our initial review, there seems to be some opportunities that are available statutorily for this.
Very good. And then Mayor, the intention is to bring this back to the council or to committee of the whole in a few weeks? Is that the intention for another look at this?
Yeah, we'll see how we get, how we progress here with it and what input we alter, yeah.
Very good. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right.
Couple more questions, if that's all right.
One second, Councilmember Quan, we got Mr. Weigl.
Overall, Mayor, I like the idea. We talked about this during lunch at one of my favorite restaurants, The Red Pepper. But one thing that just kind of hit me that I think would be important with this is, I think about this as an investment for our community, and I see oftentimes that whenever there's a tax incentive or a tax break for businesses that want to develop, I was often told that it's an investment. It's an investment in our community, and maybe we can take the approach with, with this same program is if there is a property, I think the proper term is blight or whatever you want to call it, maybe it's something that we add to this program as well, so that we take an existing property that maybe has some, some issues, and maybe we, we add that program to this, so that if there is a 22-year-old single person that wants to buy a house but also wants to do the work to it, and it makes it more attractive in our community, maybe that's something we add to it as well. I understand Mr. Sandy's concerns about taxpayer money. I personally would like to see maybe there's an option that it gets added to specials or something along those lines where it's repaid back or something. I'd be open to conversation with that, but overall, I think it's a great idea. I think it, it helps people that may struggle to get into their first home with that, with that down payment assistance. So I think we're on the right track. I think you and the staff have done a good job of putting something together, but maybe it's something we can add to as well.
Yeah, and that was a part of the voucher system that Meredith had talked about, was to offer that, so, you know, some of the houses in this price range need some work, so that was where the $10,000 could go towards a new roof, air conditioner, furnace, whatever. So there's, yeah, there's definitely some room to talk. Councilmember Quan, did you have one more? We're going to...
Yeah, sorry, I've got a big agenda. Yeah, so one thought on just a metric for success is that maybe if we could watch the average sales... is that maybe if we could watch the average sales transaction price for homes in Grand Forks, and maybe they stay flat, or maybe they even decrease. But, along with that windfall for developers that Mr., or Councilman Weber said, you know, if housing prices go up, on average, $10,000 across the city, then maybe we missed the mark there. So, maybe that's just a metric, if we're trying to find a way to measure this program's success. And then, just another quick comment, is there any other items that are prohibitive, allowing people to purchase their first home, outside of money? Is credit an issue? Is getting a bank to sign up for a loan an issue? Is there any other way to help, outside of direct financial assistance?
In talking to the real estate agents, and the bankers, and the mortgage brokers, the number one thing was just the money for the down payment. There was a lot of people that had the credit, had the income, but just with high rental costs and other expenses, they weren't able to, you know, student loans, childcare, they weren't able to come up with the down payment.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Any other comments? Vice President Ma.
So, how would these two programs work together? Is it, would you qualify for the CLT program, and then automatically qualify for the city program? Would they work together, or would it be one or the other?
The CLT program, I think, is more attractive. So, anybody that can fall within those categories, I think, would go that route. I think that was kind of the caveat, that the city was that we were the last resort, like, if they couldn't make it under the guidelines, the HUD guidelines there.
Right. I would anticipate that any of the lower-income buyers would want to go with the CLT program, because there's more funding available. The goal of putting the two programs together is to have a single point of contact, so that they can reach out to us as the initial, and we can do all of the other administration for the other program, because they are very comparable on that side of things, as far as affirming income and working on debt-to-income ratios, things like that. But, for the most part, households who are under that income limit, I can't think of any reason why they would want to utilize the city funds rather than the CLT funds.
So, it would be one or the other? It wouldn't be a combined? Okay.
Right.
And then, the state also has a first-time home buyer program as well?
There are some programs through the North Dakota Housing Finance Agency. So, they would not be able to combine the two programs, but they can use the loans, like with the START program. They are able to use that loan type, but they wouldn't be able to, my understanding is, they would not be able to also receive the down payment assistance through that program.
For just the CLT program and the city program, or would that apply to...
We're going to do it similar, so whatever kind of the rules are outside of the house price and income.
That would be my understanding, but we have been in conversation with the Housing Finance Agency as well, so we will dig into that a bit further before anything's finalized.
Okay. And then, you had mentioned it helps future grant applications if the city is doing, how does that work? So, you would apply for yours independent, and then ours is an independent program through the city as well, so...
So, basically, just in my budget for those grant applications, I would reflect that the city is contributing a certain portion for that. It's, we would have to get into the details of what home would consider a match. For sure, if there's any administrative funding, that can be considered a match. As far as the down payment and closing cost assistance, that's, I would have to have a conversation with Commerce about that, because it serves a higher income level. That would be the question there.
Okay. And just in general, I guess, you know, with a new program like this, I would be very interested in having actual goals and measurements, to know how we're measuring success, if it's successful. I would also, I would be interested to know how many people, you know, in 2019 or 2018 would have qualified for this, and how much that program would have been utilized, kind of given those numbers, to just get a baseline for how many first-time home buyers there are at these price points.
If I can just comment on that, it is, it's obviously difficult to track what was missed, but I do, today, I get about five calls a week, without an existing program even being out there marketed, asking for down payment, closing cost assistance. And it's always that cash to close, that's the issue. Credit typically is not an issue, and the monthly mortgage payment is rarely an issue as well. It's always that cash piece. I can't come up with...
So, you're noticing that as a component, that people can't make happen?
Absolutely.
All right, President Sandy.
Hello.
So, I get, I think a lot of homeownership involves personal sacrifice and personal responsibility. I also think that that involves saving money for down payments. I understand that there are people that are in the trap, who are stuck in, single people, married people, married people with kids, people living together with kids, doesn't matter. There are people that fall in that income level, where they get stuck in the juggernaut, the meat grinder, where they're paying big payments on their apartment, or the home that they're renting, and they're not able to scratch out dollars for down payments for a home. I believe that the program that you're putting together with the Community Land Trust should help the biggest group of those people. That doesn't mean that there isn't some other sweet spot of people that perhaps wouldn't qualify, or could potentially need additional assistance. I just don't know what that group is, or where that group is, or how we identify them, because, again, I'm looking at the household size, and the income limits, and trying to rationalize in my head how we can justify using taxpayers' dollars to help a family of four at the 100% median income of $88,400. Even that people, you're, sure, you're in the 22% federal tax bracket, but only over $80,000. Those people pay about $15,000 a year in federal and state taxes, which leaves $70,000 of expendable income to go to housing. I don't understand why those people can't, if they can't scratch together $8,000 this year for a down payment. They should be able to in a couple of years. And I understand, in today's world of immediate gratitude, I want to buy a house this minute, but I didn't get the opportunity to just buy a house without having, well, without having the resources, right? So, how do we find that group that isn't making $88,000, that should be able to come up with a down payment, and identify who they are, and, or at least, the income level that they should be at, or that should qualify for our program? I don't know that. I'd love to actually put some thought into finding that, so that we can really help the people that need the help, especially if we're going to make an investment locally. I just, I believe that we need to dive into trying to figure out those numbers. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. I guess to that point, is we certainly could have more consultants, committees, task forces, blue-ribbon commissions, where we can actually do something and try it, and see how it works. And I think, I'm pretty excited about this, to give it a shot. And like I said, it's a pilot program, so we'll be able to get a lot of that data from the program itself.
Mayor, one more thing that we've discussed, really ad nauseam here, is our two largest challenges are workforce and housing. And we often say they're combined, they're integrated with one another. I think that's the attempt of this, is that we need to retain and capture those, whether they're UND students, or newly employed here in Grand Forks, we need to retain them in Grand Forks, not only as taxpayers and people that are doing great for the community, but because of workforce. And I think this is the mayor's attempt to, how do we keep people here at an early stage, and so they continue to grow in our economy, and grow our workforce? And we've often said, these two things are combined. So, at least it's an attempt. And we talked earlier with the mayors, we really don't know the answers. And if we created something under a pilot, at least we would know who entered the program house, and who they are, what their demographics, at least we'd have more of a story to go off of, even if it were a pilot opportunity moving forward. So, thank you.
All right, Ms. Dockler.
I have a few questions, actually. I love the idea of housing assistance. I think the American dream for a lot of people really did help my generation of millennials maybe get into homes for the first time in Grand Forks. I think that we can't have this conversation in a vacuum. I think we still have to have a conversation about rentals in Grand Forks, and the amount of affordable income homes that are being bought up by rental properties, and then being removed from the market from first-time home buyers. I think that's a huge impact. So, even if we still had 800-some-plus houses that didn't get destroyed by the 97 flood, there's a good chance, with the rate at which houses are being bought in Grand Forks right now, that a good half of them, or more, would have been snapped up, and then flipped around to be rented out to families. So, those houses would be not available anyway. So, that needs to be a conversation I think we have to have simultaneously. It certainly impacts Ward Two, that I represent, and then also Danny's, or Councilman Weigl's Ward over in Ward One and others. As we move further south, the north end naturally grows towards the south. So, I think that that conversation has to be made, and really honestly, an earnest discussion had, about how to address that. It always is brought up, but we don't really move forward past just the initial discussion of it. And we really need to address that. The other thing is, with the CLT program, is there, it sounds like they're two separate programs in a way, right? So, the city has theirs, and then the CLT program is separate. They would exist simultaneously, so that when Mrs. Contreras went to write her grant, she would be able to say that there's a partnership, a public-private type of partnership. Grants love that, especially federal grants. So, I understand the point of that. But, with that said, could we also, as a city, look at funding more towards the CLT program, and not necessarily even doing a pilot program? It's not necessarily what we want, it's just a question of, could that happen, so that more money was going towards low-income housing, or low-income families, looking to put roots down here in Grand Forks? Is that possible?
So, that would certainly be a possibility, and when we look at the match side of things, that would actually be even more effective, because then you're funding the exact same program. So, that's all just a matter of funding source, as far as the city goes, but that's certainly a possibility on our end.
Okay. And then, the other question, too, that I have, is that, again, this is great. I love when we talk about new programs and piloting, and really serving people where their needs are, especially for something as basic as housing. My question, though, is I don't want to duplicate services either, because I know that there are programs that help as well, like the CLT that already exists. And then, the RRVCA also has a low-to-moderate income program that they use for low-to-moderate family, income families, to make improvements upon their houses. Now, it is restricted by area, I think, near north end, near south end. There's restrictions to that. But, again, is that something that, and I don't know if you can actually answer this or not, but is that something that we, as a city, could partner with, a program that already exists, to fund that more, and maybe even give them the money and the opportunity to expand where those funds could go towards? So that, because in the near north side, if you look at Ward Two, over in the University Park, I think, and over to Stanford Road, that doesn't necessarily fall into the near north end, but these are also the homes that are starting to become the homes that would need and/or qualify for this kind of repair. So, can we fund programs like that, that already exist, and help the families that really, truly need it? It's not to say that daycare isn't expensive. I have run that wheel for a long time. I have three kids, and they all went through daycare. And when my youngest goes to kindergarten this year, it will be a relief, in some ways. So, I understand that that's a huge burden for families, too. But, is there a way that we can make the most impact? You know, even with a six-figure salary, and if you're paying those daycare costs, they're still expensive. But, six figures and paying those daycare costs versus four figures, or five figures, in paying those daycare costs is significantly different. And yes, they may qualify for programs through Grand Forks County to help subsidize some of that, but they still have other bills to pay as well, on top of just childcare costs. And so, that's where I think, like your program, the CLT is awesome, and RRVCA's program is amazing. And I want to be able to see that. And I know that people fall into that in-between, when they're getting out of kind of assistance, and they're getting out of that help, and it's really scary. So, maybe we can capture that with the cities, but then that would be much less than 120% of the AMI. That would be much less, but it would be more targeted. Is that possible? I don't, Mrs.?
Yeah, we're, I think we're still in the process of setting that number. That number could be at 95, 85, 100, 103.4. We're kind of in the process of figuring out where that number is. So, we just, I mean, we have a chart there that just showed the ranges. I guess, back to your first point about, you know, the investors that are buying houses versus homeowners that are trying to buy a house, I guess I see this program as now you suddenly have homeowners that are armed with an extra 10,000 to be able to compete for houses that an investor would snap up normally. So, this is a great opportunity for your Ward, for people to be able to pick up houses that investors might have normally snapped up.
I guess, sorry?
Oh, it's okay. I didn't know if they had something to add.
Well, I just wanted to reiterate what you said about Red River Valley's rehab program, because that is a, it's a loan program, but it's very low interest. And if the homeowner's income level is low enough, it can become a grant. That is funded through the city with federal dollars. It was a CDPG-funded program. And in fact, we allocated some of our home funds to Red River to expand on that. So, you're right, there is a huge need. But, with these federally-funded programs, again, we're tied to those income limits that the federal government specifies. To ask Red River or another agency to take on a rehab program at those higher levels, they would, you know, they have the capacity to do it, but at the level that HomeSense is operating now, you know, four or five a year, it's a great program, but it's not making massive inroads into our affordable housing stock.
Right. And so, that's where my question of, if we put more support towards it, could they? Could they make more of an impact in dollars that they're awarding, but then also in the people, I think there's one person on their staff that does all the applications, so it is time-consuming to do all of that as well. But, I just think that if we exhaust the programs that are already existing, to support them to the point where they are amazing, and how they serve our community, then, after that, to have a conversation about individuals who are making six figures and want to buy a house. Because, honestly, I can't imagine somebody who is making six figures probably wanting to buy a $95,000 house, which was how much my first house cost in Grand Forks, for their first home. It's probably not likely. They're probably going to kind of gear more towards this maximum home purchase price of $300,000, and not towards that initial. And they might, and then they'd be super savvy. But then I would also question, do you really need that income assistance to buy such a lower-priced home? So, that's just some food for thought. And then I'm also wondering, what kind of conversation has there been about incorporating education as a piece of engaging with the city of Grand Forks programs? I know the CLT, that is kind of just set up because of the federal strictures, but for the Grand Forks program, for these higher incomes, is there a piece of that? Is there conversations about, what do you do after you buy a home, you know, to maintain all of these things? You couldn't save enough to do your initial home payment. Do you have enough saved for when you need a new water heater, when your shingles go because the winds are crazy here in Grand Forks, or a tree falls on your house?
It was left off this table, but that is a requirement, more or less, that each applicant go through a first-time home buyer training program, typically online, and not too terribly onerous to the first-time home buyer. But, to your point, yes, it is kind of an eye-opener, and to make sure that some of those things that they may not be aware of are on the radar screen before they sign on the dotted line to own that home. Yes. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I believe that's a requirement for Emily's program, and I think it's just a great idea for any first-time home buyer. So, my recommendation would be that the programs mirror each other in that requirement, that a certification that they have gone through, at least an online first-time home buyer program, would be, you know, one of the eligibility requirements for accessing funds.
It is a requirement for our program, and also many of the loan products, regardless of receiving any sort of assistance, the loan products are going to require that as well.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think we better move on. This was kind of meant as an update and a briefing, so let's move forward. We can do some work during the week on this. 2.2 City Hall modifications, and the Grand Forks Herald building update. I think we'll try to get through this kind of quickly. We've kind of had a couple of, I guess, things that had happened after we changed city attorneys. We didn't need the city attorney space anymore, so we were able to move the mayor's office and administration up to the second floor in a much smaller space. And we've also decided that the Herald building is going to be, well, we're hoping to move this more towards an economic driver, and not fill, and filled up with private entities, rather than... up with private entities rather than public entities. So we're just gonna go over some of the City Hall modifications and the Herald, what we've got planned. Todd, I don't know if you want to go ahead and brief on this as we go through it?
Okay. Doesn't show very well. Well?
The blue doesn't show.
So really, as Mayor Botchinsky has stated, we've always looked at what do we do at City Hall. And we're trying to move ourselves forward in the next ten years with space utilization. Our first thought was to use the Grand Forks Herald building, so there was a space in there that was for planning, community development, MPO, and the like. And as Mayor Botchinsky says, you know, we've had some staff changes. We used to have five to six people in the mayor's city minister's office. Now we have three. So to better use that space on the first floor. And I think to do something similar to what we were planning over the Grand Forks Herald building is having planning, community development be the front door to the City of Grand Forks from a development perspective, from an engaging perspective. Instead of having at the Herald, putting that under the roof of City Hall, and then making that as part of that first-floor space, so where the mayor, city minister's office used to be, that will be, become the planning and community development piece moving forward. So there's room for about ten locations for ten people, and so that's gonna fit in nicely there. We are planning generally a total revamp of that space, so there'll be some demolition costs moving forward with that. The second piece in the new, in City Hall on that first floor is trying to make room for the finance department. And Maureen doesn't complain about anything, so you almost have to really try to help her out, because she's so kind and giving and doesn't want to, doesn't want to make a fuss about things. But she does need more space. So really, in her space, as you see the drawing, is to open up her space for more options for office spaces. So essentially, if you've been in the finance department, it's to take their conference room and some associated space that's in the public information office, create more office so that they can spread out more appropriately, too. Secondarily, what Maureen's really wanting is a secondary outlet out of the finance department for, you know, known safety concerns. And so that accomplishes all of that. Because on the first floor, we're gonna remove the finance conference room, what they, we discussed, is let's have one conference room that we can share on the first floor. And so as you look in and around that public information office area, that would, to create a common conference room for that first floor and anyone else within City Hall to use that. The second floor, by moving planning, community development in those ten locations, that frees up space on the second floor for planning, or for engineering and inspections. And that was really what our goal is. They were crunched, so that allows them to move forward. We still think we would maintain a location for the Metropolitan Planning Organization on the second floor and engineering inspections. Secondarily, we'd move, right now, to provide more space to Maureen and the finance department. We would move the Historic Preservation Office, which is more of a part-time office, to the second floor. And what they want is a locked office, and so with their documents and such. So we would find a location on the second floor, likely in that, kind of that area that used to house planning and community development moving forward. Then finally, on the third floor, IT, what that plan shows is taking a storage room and making that additional office space for the IT department, trying to more beneficially use spaces that were storaged, trying to turn them back into office, and then finding somewhere else to house the storage. There's another couple of improvements in the IT office regarding, we have servers, and we have sprinklers in the wrong places. And so there's some modifications that we need to do in that regard. All told, though, we're gonna try to repurpose back to the Grand Forks Herald building. So when you look at the planning, community, development space, we're gonna repurpose some of the Grand Forks Herald furniture and have that integrated into that space. With engineering, they're gonna be able to spread out a little bit further. So there'll be some modifications of their workstations up on second floor, doing that sort of thing. On third floor, in IT, we'll look at probably a combination of new and maybe existing. And then, as the mayor mentioned, we've moved to the former city attorney's office, and we're back full circle. We've been told that it was the former mayor's office, so we've come back full circle. So we're looking at some office furniture, new office furniture in our area moving forward. So with all that said, right now, we've asked, as you recall, we have an architect and a construction manager at risk, JLG, and community contractors, PCL, are the two teams. So we've asked for an estimate to make all these improvements at City Hall. I think it comes to early estimates, about three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. Maureen had talked earlier at the Audit Committee, we had a pretty good year last year in 2019. And so we did set aside some of those funds for one-time projects, like City Hall renovations on that. So we have set aside that almost four-hundred-thousand for the three-twenty-five. Mayor wanted us to come here sooner rather than later, so when we start coming in September and October, to want to make some of these improvements in City Hall, that you knew this sooner rather than later regarding City Hall. So that's kind of my wrap-up on City Hall. And I know the Herald, we're working on some other things, too, Mayor, but I'll leave that to you, too.
Yeah, I think I just point out that we did have, I mean, three-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, sixty-four dollars was planned to do, to fix up the City Hall under the old plan that moved community development over. And then on top of that, there was five-hundred-and-four-thousand that was gonna be part of the remodel to move community development over. So we've turned, I think we're more efficient, and it's almost nine-hundred-thousand. We got away with three-twenty-five, so.
I would say the last thing, Mayor Botchinsky, and we mentioned this to Mr. Weber as the, and I think Mr. Veen as the president, vice president of the JDA. We are currently working on an Economic Development Administration grant, capital grant. That's part of the CARES funding right now for an accelerator or an incubator. And I've attached some of the criteria there that I think we've been told initially, we fit quite nicely into doing that. And so in that space that was gonna be city-related, is really gonna be a tenant fit-up space for accelerator-type clients, whether they be in the UAS or the data analytics, it would be more of that. Very similar to what we're doing, just instead of a community collaboration, more of a technology hub centered in the UAS. So you'll be hearing more about that at the Growth Fund and JDA. We're in the midst of putting that application together at this point. It is an eighty-twenty application with CARES, if we can meet that guideline. If we don't meet that deadline, and we're just part of the regular EDA construction grant, then it's a fifty-fifty match. So we're trying to get it in, and so we're eligible for the increased cost share that the CARES Act has provided us. More to come on that. Still in the midst of working. We're looking on that, and similarly, if we look at City Hall, September, October, to start moving forward, because people are eager to move into new spaces. We're trying to get that grant submitted from the EDA for the Grand Forks Herald building. We're targeting early September as a point where we could actually get it submitted in, hopefully late August, but early September. So lots of moving parts, and I think it's gonna come together nicely, and hopefully we get some good news soon.
Yeah, I think they've, so they got a couple pictures here. We can just look briefly, but that's the plan. We've already had interest in several tenants. We've got a couple leases that are in the process of being signed. There's a couple spaces in the building that won't be touched in the remodel. So the one tenant will be able to stay throughout that, and they're aware of the remodel process. We've got some good progress going with some sponsorships. We've got a good deal on midco to get probably some of the fastest fiber internet in there around town. I think that the entire City of Grand Forks serves about, off of one gigabyte, and there's a gigabyte going just to this building as a part of this. We'll only have, you know, a few tenants at the start, so it'll be blazing fast for them. And I think there's more to come on that, but that's, I think we can move through that now. If there's any questions on those two, we'll take some briefly.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Todd, what are you doing to remodel the new mayor's office and city administration? Just new furniture?
We're gonna get new furniture.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna get new furniture.
Thank you.
In that space.
We did have a paint, too.
Yeah.
Coat of paint and a new desk.
I'll just wrap it up. Mayor Botchinsky, we are planning, as we discussed, councilmember Dockler and Weber and Cavami, we are planning to brief the Herald at the twenty-fourth Growth Fund Committee, so we'll have another opportunity to kind of, and we'll be further along in the grant application at that point in time, too. So we'll have some more time to brief you on that.
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments on that? All right, let's move forward. Two-point-three COVID-19 update. We've been working really hard on some of this. I know Mark's been waiting patiently. We're gonna start with the testing plan and the projection, the needs that we've been working really hard with the institutional partners with Altra, with UND, the Air Force Base, public schools in the county, with the end goal to try to eventually get some resources locally so we can sort of prioritize our testing needs. So we've got quite a bit of work on that, so I'll let you take it away, Mr. Schill.
Great, thanks, Mayor, members of council. I'm Mark Schill with Praxis Strategy Group based here in Grand Forks. As we've been working the past two to three weeks with seven institutional partners that the mayor mentioned, really on a plan to figure out how can we collaborate as partners and be as effective as possible on COVID testing and COVID response. And so, you know, three goals of the program, first and foremost, are to mitigate the impact of health in local citizens. Secondly, to keep businesses, schools, and UND as open as possible. And thirdly, just realizing that, you know, an outbreak in the community impacts the entire community, and that collaboration is really, particularly in this time of uncertainty and not knowing what's coming, and vying for resources, collaboration is critical. And so the plan we put together has really four key areas that we found for crossover among the partners. And this plan isn't meant to be comprehensive. It's really looking at where can the partners work together, and focusing on that. So the four areas are, of course, the testing and screening. The second is contact tracing, isolation, and quarantine. The third one's data and data sharing. And then the fourth one is communication. And so with testing, you know, of course, the major constraint is national, global supply chain, and recognizing that. There's hope to do some more testing locally. Both UND and Altru have placed orders for additional equipment, but we're operating under the assumption that that won't be acquired for any time soon, perhaps after the first of the year. And so working under that assumption, we focused the testing plan really on targeting those who may be most susceptible within the purview of each of the partners, and trying to monitor as best we can with that. And so the second document that's provided in your packet there outlines what we know now from each of the partners as to what, who they would hope to test in an ideal situation, recognizing that we may not have the resources to do that just yet. And then how many per week on a per-week basis, to try to just get a handle on where we're at with that. Again, recognizing that ideally, new testing may become available, or new technologies may become available as well. And so along with that, there's some other items there and areas of collaboration. For instance, the Grand Forks Fire Department has been contributing to some of their certified EMTs to collect samples, so that Grand Forks Public Health can free up their resources towards contact tracing, for instance. So there's areas there besides just the testing where there's some areas to work together. The second piece is the contact tracing, isolation, and quarantine. And there, that's mostly about cooperation, sharing information, sharing resources where appropriate, and making that process as smooth as possible. The third piece there is data collection and data sharing. There, the two real key items are, one, that Mr. Dulitz will speak to in a minute, which is identifying a set of criteria and a locally-oriented system for understanding and monitoring the outbreak. Secondly, another action item there is to collect and share data as well as we can amongst partners, to agree to work from the same set of information. And then, secondly, to create a dashboard. We do have an example of that on the city's website currently, an early example, where we've used the data that we do have. Currently, the city's public information department, every day at eleven AM, is going to the state website and writing down the data. And we're using that to sort of back into some additional testing metrics. And so we've got that on the site right now. We hope to continue to work to improve that as we go forward, and incorporating some of the work of Dr. Walls and Mr. Dulitz from Public Health. And then, lastly, the last piece is communication and collaboration, which is to continue this collaborative. It's been effective. The sharing of information has been helpful, I think, for all partners. And then some shared messaging and some alignment there as well. And so the next steps would be, one, to really just continue to strengthen this relationship with the state. Secondly, to understanding that as more testing resources come available at the state, to position ourselves to acquire those, to get access to those. Or even, secondly, to have some input into how the testing is structured and strategized here locally. And then finally, we hope to strengthen a partnership with the state to share some data, and to get some better information on a more timely basis at the county level, so that we can improve what we're collecting and sharing locally.
Thank you. Did Mr. Dulitz had a presentation? Or, oh, Dr. Walls is gonna take it over. You got something first? Perfect.
Mayor Botchinsky, council, I thank you for the opportunity to have me here tonight. I'm Dr. Joe Walls, the public health officer here in the city and in the county. As many of you know, I've been involved in a variety of groups, working on the COVID-19 issues, with tremendous help from Michael Dulitz and others. We are attempting to package some of the COVID-19 data in a more usable form. So soon on the Grand Forks Public Health website, we were planning to launch the public health officer's dashboard. And before I have Michael Dulitz come forward to explain the data, I want everyone to hear, our best defense for the COVID-19 problem is prevention. So it's paramount that we all wear a mask as much as we can. I'll have Michael come up.
Thank you.
Mayor Botchinsky and members of the council, I'm Michael Dulitz. I'm the opioid response project coordinator during normal times, and then I've been helping with COVID data analysis during COVID times. And then I've also been part of our contact tracing team as well. I'm gonna do a quick data update, looking at some of the charts that I thought were beneficial from the last few times that had been before council, the last time was before council, and then go into a little bit more on the dashboard that both Mr. Schill and Dr. Walls were discussing. First, I wanted to start out with the graph that was similar to what the state was putting out for some time, the graph of the new cases in Grand Forks County. So the blue is active cases in Grand Forks County, so cases that are currently active, that are being isolated. The red is new cases. The green is case completions. And then the purple line is active cases per hundred thousand. As you can see, we've had a pretty significant increase over the past week or so. We've been tracking a couple of outbreaks, one in a long-term care setting, and then another in a university setting as well. And then we've also had a number of additional community cases to go with that. Looking, one of the questions that has been brought up was the ages of COVID cases. Last time I was here, I'd mentioned that young people are kind of the repository, it seems like, of COVID in the community. And so I did break it out based off of ages. So this, it's a breakdown by month, so you can kind of see how things have changed by month. So this is April. This is May. Again, we've seen a lot in the twenty-to-twenty-nine age group. This is June, July, August to date, and then the overall, so since April twenty-fourth, when we switched to this system. And then finally, a comparison to the age demographics as seen in the American Community Survey, so that's census data. So the area where we've been seeing the most COVID is in the age groups of twenty to twenty-nine, and now we're getting up over forty percent of the community. Obviously, that does make sense, given, you know, given the university and the community and things like that. But it is, you know, still an interesting comparison when you look at where we were at with maybe fewer university students over the early parts of the summer. And again, this is preliminary data. Here's a comparison to the other metro areas in the state, as well as I added a new measure, which I'll discuss in a second. So this is Grand Forks County, and this is active cases per hundred thousand population. Ward County has still been relatively limited in their spread, even though they've had a slight increase lately. Cass County has still been on a relatively downward trend. Burley Morton continues to see a large number of new cases. North Dakota, again, is kind of an average of all of them. And then I recently added a new measure that I've been tracking, and that's rural Grand Forks County, which is the orange, which might be a little bit hard to see up there. So the rural Grand Forks area includes Grand Forks County outside of Grand Forks, so addresses in Grand Forks County outside of Grand Forks proper, as well as the surrounding counties, Walsh County, Steel County, Trail County, Nelson County, and Griggs County. So they've been seeing an increase in the number of cases at the same time as we have. A lot of those cases have been outside of Grand Forks County proper, you know, in kind of that Nelson, Griggs... Grand Forks County proper, you know, in kind of that Nelson, Griggs, Steel County area. We saw a pretty hefty increase, as well as some in Walsh County, you know, but now we've been seeing some in the rural parts of the, of the Grand Forks County area. This is a look at the active hospitalization rate compared to the active case rate. And then, I also added on the new hospitalization rate and new case rate. Again, they seem to still correlate fairly well. In the past couple of weeks, it's been, there's been a little bit more variation in the case rate versus the hospitalization rate. I do wanna add that the hospitalizations are on the left side and correlate to the, the blue line and the green line. And then, active cases per 100,000 population are on the right side. And so, that's the red line and the purple line. So, there's two different scales on there. And so, I'm just correlating essentially the trend. This is looking at the seven-day rolling average using the risk levels established by the Harvard Global Health Institute. You know, as you can see, we've had an increase in the number of cases over the past week. And that has, you know, that has been borne out in our data. And then, something that's been brought up a lot in conversations this week is the risk levels put out by the Grand Forks Public School System. They had levels at zero to five cases per 100,000, five to 10 cases per 100,000, and then, 10 cases plus. But then, they focus solely on community spread only. So, they, they wanted to look at the , the community spread piece by itself, bearing in mind that we designate cases, community spread as kind of a designation of, of, kind of exclusion. So, if they are not a close contact, if they have not traveled, if they're not a household contact, if we can't identify any other way that they would have gotten in contact with COVID, then we assign them as a, as a community spread. And so, that does make it a little bit harder to, you know, to use that. It's very dependent on the, the skill of the, of the case investigator. And so, finally, I want to talk about the Health Officers Dashboard. The Health Officers Dashboard is something that we've been working on for the past couple of weeks in response to the lack of, you know, the lack of perceived data that we've been putting out and the lack of clearly defined criteria for risk movement. You know, we've been trying to use the, the governor's, you know, the governor's smart restart guidance. And the, it was written really well for, you know, getting us down to green, but there isn't really good criteria for going in the other direction. And so, we saw that as, you know, a potential weakness. And then, we also realized that we are collecting some really good data. The Public Information Office has been huge in helping us out in doing the calculations on a day-to-day basis and filling out, filling out like a Google document with publicly available data. It's just, how do we interpret that publicly available data? And so, I, I've been taking on, you know, looking at this data, comparing it to what I have available to me as preliminary and, you know, and data that is covered by privacy laws and comparing it. And it's pretty good. Like, the, the comparison is pretty solid. And so, I feel really comfortable moving forward with figuring out how to interpret that data. So, we had five factors that I thought, you know, I thought were pretty good. And talking with Dr. Walls, Dr. Walls thought were pretty good as well, that we could use in the community. And that's looking at new cases per 100,000. That's a really reliable measure, and that's something that they put out every day. And it's, you know, relatively easy to convert it to a rate. Tests completed per 100,000. You know, that was something that we were able to get off of the state website. Percent positivity of cases and then percent change. And then, finally, the, the last element was hospital capacity. And Dr. Walls felt really confident that we could get a good measure of that from the, from the, from the Altru health system. So, I wanted to go over each of the different factors so you get an idea of how it all comes together. It comes together as a weighted average in the final part, and then, we were able to stratify risk. So, the first one is looking at new COVID cases per 100,000. Again, that's a rate per 100,000. That's something that we, those levels we received from the Harvard Global Health Institute. And we use the same four levels that they used, the less than one case per 100,000, one to nine cases, 10 to 24, and 25 plus. We have been at the green level with this. We've been at the yellow level, and we've been at the orange level. So, that does give us an idea on where we've been. And we have not yet hit the red level. And so, it, you know, it's something that, you know, we know that if we see more spread in the community, that is something that could potentially happen. But based off of our history, we have not experienced yet. Looking at new tests per 100,000. So, this is a sum of tests in the previous seven days. And then, that's expressed as a rate per 100,000. This is something that we, that we pulled off of the White House Coronavirus Task Force report. They put together a report to help states compare each other. And so, we were just using those, you know, those same kind of criteria for this dashboard with, you know, the only difference that we made is we added an orange level in there in addition to red. So, they do green, yellow, red. We added green, yellow, orange, red. And so, you know, we made this as a seven-day sum because that's what they do. And then, that also helps, you know, helps kind of smooth out any low testing days or anything like that, as well as creating outliers when we have high testing days. We have been into the green with this, with testing capacity locally. We've been in orange, we've been in red. This is something that's weighted relatively, or, you know, on the lower side in the grand scheme of things because it's something that, you know, is kind of a modifier on risk. If we aren't testing a lot of people and we have a high percent positivity, that means that there's more people out there that likely have COVID and aren't able to access a test. Looking at average percent positivity, this, again, is just looking at the number of tests completed and then, the number of, of positive cases completed each day. And then, we express that as a seven-day average. You know, based off of what, based off of the data from the past couple of days, we're still tweaking that a little bit, or, you know, you know, we're still analyzing that data and getting it in. You know, we may not be quite as high as the 10 to 12%, but kind of showing a general trend in increasing test positivity. And this is, again, something that we've been in the green on. We've been in the yellow, we've been in the orange on. So, you can see kind of a variation that we've had in the community. And this is a factor that we've taken from the White House Coronavirus Task Force. And then, average percent change. This is another measure that we took from the White House Coronavirus Task Force. We wanted to figure out a way to show kind of variations that have happened in the community. But we didn't wanna, you know, swing too highly. You know, we didn't wanna put too much weight to 100% increase if we've only had, you know, five cases in a particular timeframe and it goes to 10. You know, that's a, you know, that's a pretty small increase in cases per 100,000, but that would look, you know, pretty high on there. So, you know, we just created the four different levels. So, zero to 20% decrease, zero to 20% increase, greater than 20% or greater than 20% decrease for these levels. And again, this is something we pulled from the White House and then added the orange level. And then, we doubled the values because of being a smaller community, or, you know, being a smaller area, the, you know, the percent changes would kind of sway things a lot. And then, finally, hospital score. This is the one that's a little bit more on the subjective side, but we've kind of pulled together the levels that various, various government agencies have used for their, their color coding dashboards. So, I've pulled information from the Oklahoma Department of Health. The way they use it is they have four different levels for their color classifications. And on the fourth level, if, if there's a certain case level that's reached, plus there's constraints to hospital capacity, and they call it that, called out the red level. Austin, Texas, if we use the same, if we use the same guidance as Austin, Texas on the number of cases and things like that for their hospital capacity, you know, it would put us at, you know, way past red as a state. The Ohio Department of Health had a relatively good set of factors as well that we pulled from, looking at some of the things that they use. And then, we also got some input from the institutional partners and things along those lines. So, the factors that we used, they kind of go based off of availability of COVID-specific beds, availability of staff, and then, and then impacts to the hospital system as a whole. What we saw, you know, or what we don't necessarily want to see is having to delay other care because of COVID. So, that would be kind of a warning sign if we're having to delay other care because we're caring for people with COVID. That would certainly be a warning sign for us locally. And then, if we have, you know, a lot of our hospital bed capacity taken up and things like that related to COVID, or we didn't have resources available that were able to come to us to help with COVID, that would obviously be a source of alarm for us. I believe, you know, we, this is something that would be provided to us by Altru. And it, you know, it is a little bit more subjective, but it is based off of, somewhat based off of their, their existing plans. I believe we have been in the green level since, since April, but that's an estimation. And then, finally, looking at the overall score, the weighted factors, I got input from some institutional partners, some people that have backgrounds with, working with data and things like that. And we just came up with weights for the different areas. We want to make sure that, you know, we want to make sure that what we're doing is, you know, we're seeing changes fast enough to understand if, where the trends are coming. But we don't want to, you know, hit the alarm button too quickly. And we also want to be able to understand a context, you know, with the level. So, if we look at just new cases without the context of percent positivity or the number of tests we're doing, you know, that might, you know, that might artificially skew a score up. And so, that's why we included those factors as things that could kind of, you know, tweak a score a little bit up or down. The good part about, you know, using a, a five-factor scale with four points each is it doesn't, or, you can look at what each of the factors will be and each of the weights, and you can understand what level you'll get it in various situations. There's only, I believe, 1,024 combinations. So, essentially, to hit a red, we would have to have a pretty significant increase in cases. So, we'd have to be in red in cases, red on positivity, and either have concerns regarding percent change or the tests completed per week. So, it's not something that would be, or have a hospital constraint. So, it's not something that would be easy to, to go up to the red, but it would be something that could potentially happen in the community and could potentially be a sign for, you know, an indicator for a policymaker to take action. And I just wanted to have a scoring example, and this is from yesterday. The data might be slightly different just because when we're getting new data, and sometimes you end up looking back, you know, back one day and then having to make slight adjustments because the state has made adjustments in the meantime. So, looking at new cases per 100,000, that would, our value was 22.6 cases per 100,000, new cases. And so, that would put us at a score of two in that area, a weight of 40%. So, that weighted score is a 0.8. Tests completed, 1,400 tests were completed in the past week, looking back a week from August 16. So, that would put us at a score of a one, a weight of 10%. So, that's a 0.1. Percent positivity, 12.3% positive, that would give us a score of three. Weight of 20%, 0.6. And then, finally, percent change, 49% change, 49% increase in the number of new cases. And that's compared, comparing two different week periods with a weight of 10%. That's a 0.3. And that gave us the overall score of a 1.8, which would put us in the high-risk category. One of the goals of trying to put this together is to make it as transparent as possible so you can see exactly what we're, you know, what we're using for our factors in, in determining the score. You know, at, because we want this to be something that people can, can use as a locally sourced adjunct to assist with decision-making. As I just said, it's to augment existing color risk systems. So, the state has put out a color risk system. And, you know, we're, we put out a risk level, but we aren't putting any specific recommendations to go with it. This is just something to help assist you in decision-making. You know, if you, an individual entity was looking for a way that they could correlate it, they might consider using the governor's smart restart guidance, you know, in their business or something like that. You know, the only bad parts about this data is it's data that we're pulling from the state website on a daily basis. So, we have to go in, pull the data, put it into a Google document. And then, we, and then, we're able to put it up online. You know, the, you know, I just said, we're trying to be as objective as possible with putting this together. But hospital capacity, there's still a subjective element to it, but they should be the ones that know their capacity the best. And then, one other limitation is it doesn't include the long-term care impact. So, I was talking to a long-term care administrator who said, well, we're keeping a lot of our COVID cases in our, you know, within our own system rather than sending them to the hospital. The only time they go to the hospital is essentially if they need ICU-level care. And so, we could be completely overwhelmed, and the hospital could be sitting there, twiddling their thumbs essentially. You know, and so, that is another consideration is that long-term cares could end up with a, with a greater impact that wouldn't be borne out in this dashboard. And then, I just want to emphasize that, you know, we do really want to work with the state to get better data and to kind of get a better data feed to help feed this. And so, to help improve the, the quality of the data that we're providing. And then, my final piece is, again, I'm not trying to endorse or promote any policy. I just, you know, want to try and give you guys the, the information that you're looking for. If there is any information that you want me to be providing at the meetings, let me know, and I can do my best to get those answers. I've, I've just been trying to pull up questions that have been coming up to the community and helping address them through these. So, with that, are there any questions? And I believe Debbie's on as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'm Mr. Weber. Thank you, sir. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your desire for action and, and that we can grow impatient with process sometimes. But a few things could be more important than this. And actually, our agenda isn't that long tonight. And so, I, I appreciate the detailed information and hope that we can have a conversation now. I was alarmed, oh, about a month ago, to realize that the state was giving us one risk level for the entire state. And so, we were, as policymakers, looking at, oh, everything was green level. And indeed, much of the summer, Grand Forks was very fortunate, and we had low case numbers. But it seemed increasingly important that we have good local data. So, I appreciate all of the work that's gone into this. And I think that the, the model that you're, the system that you've come up with makes a great deal of sense with those five points. Currently, as I understand it, of the five points, we're really only in the green on one of those. And that's in terms of our hospital. Altru is in good shape because currently, we don't have an overwhelmed situation there. Otherwise, we've gone from a very fortunate summer. Now, we're in orange level. We, we have some problems here. And I understand COVID fatigue. People are getting bored, tired of having to talk about COVID all the time. I'm sick of wearing this silly mask around everywhere I go. But it's, it's an important part of what we need to do. And in fact, we are at an orange level now as we anticipate the return of thousands of university students. And in fact, one of the things you told us tonight is that our situation with 20 to 29-year-olds is well above the national average. And that's before the return of the, the students. Is that correct, Mr. Doolitz?
That was the American Community Survey data for, for Grand Forks. So, that's just the number of, the percent of the community that's 20 to 29 years old. So...
Right. But our percentage of 20 to 29-year-olds who are testing positive seems to be much higher than the national level for that age group?
Oh, there's no data about that in there. So, I just have the population of Grand Forks. So, 20, like 20-some percent of the population of Grand Forks is between 20 and 29.
Right.
And then, the, the months on there, that's the percentage of the total overall positives from Grand Forks. I didn't compare that to any other...
Greta, could you take us back to that slide? That was the, or, do you have it there? This was the bar chart? Yeah. So, you started off telling us what it was like in April, May, June, and then, the American, oh, that was the American Community Survey.
So, I was just looking at the population. So, I'm, I'm saying that, you know, 40% of the population overall has ma, or, has made up the positive COVID cases in the 20 to 29 age group, whereas it's only 23% of the community. So, 23% of the community is making for 40% of the COVID cases.
I see. We, we have a problem with our 20 to 29-year-olds carrying of the virus. And that's before the university students have returned. Is, is that a fair statement, then? Is that a fair statement, then?
With a peer, based on the data.
Okay, very good. And, and I appreciate the public health wanting to be cautious about making policy recommendations. You're trying to remain objective, just give us good information. But what I'm trying to do is, is sound the alarm. Your objective reporting of information actually presents us with some information we should be alarmed about. We are now, we've gone from green, past yellow, we're currently in orange with the students returning next week. The, the discussion has indicated that the best strategy is to minimize spread, and currently, our best strategy is testing. That's the main tool that we're planning on using. Although, as Dr. Walls, our public health officer, indicated at the very beginning of this, one of the best preventative measures we can take right now is, is mask-wearing. That was from the public health officer. And as far as testing, are we going to discuss testing a little bit more, or is this the end of the presentation this evening?
That's the end of the presentation.
So let me ask, perhaps this is for Mr. Schill or Dr. Walls or yourself, Michael?
And Debbie's on as well.
Very good.
I believe.
Testing terribly important. We want to have a sound testing strategy. This is good, but there continues to be problems with testing supplies, the validity of the tests, even the best tests that we have have some problems. And if we were able to test everyone that needs to be tested, there's this terribly long delay between the test and the results. Five days is not uncommon, and that presents a terrible problem, because during that five days, people can continue to spread the virus. But perhaps most importantly is lab capacity. Even if we had enough tests, I believe we do not currently have the lab capacity nationally, regionally, or locally to process all of those tests. If, if one of the three of you or yourself could, could comment on that.
Based on my experience as a contact tracer, what we have been seeing is a slight increase in the time between testing and getting results. This past week, it actually was, was better. The, the UND testing event that happened this weekend, we, or last week, we were getting test results very early on Saturday morning for something that happened on Thursday, so that's getting into the 48-hour range. But it's all dependent on, you know, what testing we're doing, you know, throughout the, throughout the state as well. So I am part of those calls, and I hear about, you know, we're, we're working on testing everywhere, and then it's carrying out the process beyond just, you know, getting the test and the result, and then it's getting people notified that takes, that takes staff or technology, or, you know, staff to work the technology to get the, the negative results out. And then, you know, we're, we're implementing a lot of processes, both locally and as a state, to try and address COVID very quickly, you know, and it's, you know, we see occasional hiccups along the way, like, you know, this weekend, a bunch of results got resent out from previous testing events and things like that.
Sure, and I'm encouraged by that news. And I remember earlier in the summer, there was a lot of cynicism about the governor's goal of the number of tests we would have each day. And now I believe that we're actually passing his, his intended goal. So things are going well, have been going, by, by some measures, well with testing. But we now have thousands of universities, tens of thousands of school districts, going to be dependent upon a testing strategy over the next few weeks. Without, I'm not aware of any exponential increase in testing supplies or lab capacity that's occurred over the last couple of weeks to address the demand that I anticipate over the next few weeks is, could you comment on that?
I am aware of discussions to get additional testing capacity at the state to the tune of 6,000 more tests per day.
And North Dakota has been a lead in, in testing.
Yes.
Yes.
And, you know, Debbie's there as well, but we have done a, we have done a very good job at getting individuals, close contacts, household contacts. We don't have any problem with getting them tested locally, whereas, you know, other locations have had challenges with that as well. So I'll defer to Debbie as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Bochensky, members of the council, there are a few other things that the state will be employing in the next few weeks to really increase testing among the university students. First of all, there's more than 60 locations where testing will be available across the state in the next week. We have, I believe, four at UND. UND is fairly self-sufficient in this, but we're supporting it to a great extent. Approximately between 5,000 and 6,000 tests will be able to be conducted. It's not required for students, but they will be incentivized. The testing will also be available to faculty and staff at K through 12, so that will also give us greater testing capacity. And it's my understanding that a lot of the long-term care testing, which is what takes up a lot of that capacity on a serial basis, will be shifted to a private lab or will be suspended for a short period of time just to help increase the capacity. Plus, the state plans on currying the test samples to the lab in Bismarck in batches from the university sites. That will also help to relieve the pressure of a lot of samples coming in at one time. So there are a lot of efforts being made to try to increase the capacity overall, and then, of course, we're always looking for the new technologies that will help us expand that as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Doolitz? President Sandy?
Mayor, Mr. Doolitz, and of course, Ms. Swanson, I, as always, appreciate all of your hard work and effort. I think I've probably been the most critical person of both Grand Forks Public Health and North Dakota Public Health on the lack of information that we get at the local level, specifically from and about the local level, in order to make decisions. I do really appreciate all the hard work that you're putting in. And I also, when I'm asking for things like a list of underlying conditions, you're doing everything you can to get me that information and give me the information I'm looking for. I honestly really appreciate it. And there certainly is no question that our public health department is working very hard right now and are most likely overtasked. There's always an if and a but, of course. Grand Forks Public Schools is being asked to make decisions about their operations, essentially on a daily basis. We've been told in a very nicely-written email by the state that, I guess, I won't say that they don't care, but they're not going to provide information specific about the city of Grand Forks, which I believe would help the school district make their decisions. My question for you is, in your presentation, you quite clearly call out that you've got info related to rural Grand Forks area. And so you can get, you obviously can get some information about specific areas of Grand Forks County. So my question is, why can't you get specific information about the city of Grand Forks?
In this circumstance, you know, there is information that can be collected in different ways, shapes, and forms, based off of, you know, data provided, like city and things like that. I just have to be very careful that we're making sure to provide it in enough aggregate manner that it can't identify any individual or anything like that. So I am working through kind of a backlog of, of other data requests, some specifically for the school, and so I do hope to keep trying to answer those questions, and you bring up a very good question, because I think there's kind of an assumption sometimes that if I, or, you know, if a person were to provide just Grand Forks County data, that would give us, you know, you know, 99% there, you know, for, for answering any type of Grand Forks-specific question. So I obviously brought up the contrary, and so it is worth looking into.
You certainly did, right?
Yeah.
And so, of course, I believe that information for Grand Forks County is relevant, but outbreak in Northwood or Laramore or both can skew the numbers for the city of Grand Forks and for the people in the school district that are trying to make very difficult decisions. And therefore, I believe, I don't think they are looking for you to tell them on what corner or part of town are we seeing major outbreaks. I think they're looking for aggregate data. I don't mean to speak for them, but I believe if you would ask them, what do they want? They want to know how many people that live in the city of Grand Forks on a daily basis are testing positive, and how much of that is from community spread. And I think if you could figure out how to give that to them, they would certainly appreciate that. Thank you again, Michael, for every, Mr. Doolitz, for everything you're doing for us.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, well, I think Mr. Weber and Mr. Sandy said everything I was going to say, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Moving on to number three, public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
3.1 is public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending the zoning map, Skidmore addition. This was tabled from July 20th, 2020.
Mr. Gangler, do you have an update on that?
The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve the request, and now it's being brought forward for final approval at the public hearing tonight.
Are any questions or comments, any, before we do a public hearing? Public hearing, any public comment on this? No, seeing none. We have a motion to approve by President Sandy and a second by Mr. Weigle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.2.
3.2, public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending zoning map, Lot 1, Block 1, Grand Forks, Grand City's Mall re-subdivision.
With this item, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is the, the former Kmart property, which is being requested to be rezoned from sort of the older conventional B2 shopping style, shopping center to the B3 general business district. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this item, so staff is recommending final approval this evening.
Any questions or comments? Public hearing, any comments? A motion by, to approve, Mr. Weigle, second. Vice President Mock, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to number four, action items. Looks like, unless there was any other ones, we were going to pull 4.1, 4.5, 4.10, and 4.16, so we'd move forward on 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.11, 4.12, 4.13, 4.14, 4.15, and 4.17 on the consent agenda, unless anyone had something. Nope, do we have a motion? Motion to approve by President Sandy, second by Ms. Dockler.
Could I ask for a point of clarification, having, before we vote? The item 4.7, the, the one-way to two-way traffic, just for clarification, we, we have the same staff recommendation as we had last week, but what we're agreeing to tonight is what we voted on last week.
Yeah, the motion that was carried last week.
Just wanted to confirm that. Very good, thanks.
All right, seeing we had two motions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry. 4.1.
Red River Bio Refinery wastewater allocation.
Todd?
Mayor Bochensky and members of the city council. I would like to point out a few people. When you work in wastewater treatment, you don't get pointed out until there's a, a challenge. So this evening, we have Melanie Parby, Lisa Button, who was our director of water and assistant director, but also Brittany Oster is right next to Lisa, and she does a lot of the wastewater, stormwater permitting, so she does a lot of great work behind the scenes. And then Todd Matelski is with the yellow mask there with the gray shirt, he's our wastewater treatment supervisor, and so he's doing, has done a lot of the work as part of, you should be really proud of your city staff and what they do to work with industry on an ongoing basis behind the scenes. And I also want to point out, we have a really good engineering consulting team, and next to Todd is Harvey Gullicks. He's, he's a senior engineer with A2S and does a really fantastic job helping us on the wastewater treatment side. And then Sean Gaddy from A2S is also here on the financial side. Two other folks I want to highlight, because you may want to have some questions, is we have Tony Hodney, he's here from Red River Bio Refinery, and he's the plant manager. And Keshav Rapal, he's the principal in charge of, I'll call it the Red River Bio Refinery Development Team, if I can say it that way. So the point of this presentation is, we've been working real hard with Red River Bio Refinery on, on the startup of this particular facility. As I said, there's a lot of people do a lot of great things, so this NDPDS, what that really means is that's our wastewater discharge permit that we have to the Red River of the north. So again, most years in 365 days of the year, when we discharge, you don't hear anything about it, but it's a critically important that piece of, that we have, that we maintain over time. That's what we're trying to protect. We've got to be able to discharge from our wastewater treatment facilities. As part of, we have a municipal-owned wastewater treatment plant, meaning that we have, we have residential customers, we have commercial, and we have industrial customers. Industrial customers to us are JR Simplot, the city of East Grand Forks, and in this case, Red River Bio Refinery. We have separate permits with all those with different, different limits. Currently, right now, we under, we know that River Bio Refinery is, they're in a startup phase. And when you're in a startup phase, number one, we require all industrial facilities or industrial customers to have a pre-treatment system, because we can't take their full low-door wastewater treatment plant. Our, our wastewater treatment plant is, is really meant for the community, and industry is just a portion of the community. And so we require industrial permits. Right now, River Bio Refinery, we have some temporary limits, because they're getting their system up and going from a pre-treatment site. So over this several-month period of time, we've allowed them some temporary allocation, so they're much higher than we can, we can handle long-term moving forward. We are working with Red River Bio Refinery to solidify them as part of a longer-term strategy and incorporate them into our, our, our particular facility. We've discussed a lot, COVID pandemic-related. You know, we're under a public health emergency related to COVID-19, and so the orders that we've been providing, whether they've been with Mayor Brown or, or with Mayor Bochensky, they have to be COVID-19-related to the public health emergency. Specifically, we've, we have cited, number one, the delivery of equipment has been an issue with COVID, with all the, with the travel, the manufacturing issues, all the things that have gone around the globe. A lot of this equipment is sourced from Europe and other places, because it is industrial equipment. The second part is, they have had to go with a different startup team. The previous startup team was going to be from Europe, and obviously, with travel bans, they have been unable to travel to the United States, so they've had to go to Plan B as part of their startup. Through this time period, we've, we bill, and you see this in the budget, we bill for base fees on wastewater, we bill for flow, and we bill for this, for industrial surcharges. And right now, their industrial surcharges are quite high. In, in city code, those industrial surcharge rates are meant for industries that are, have a fully functioning, started-up industrial pre-treatment facility. Their rates that we're charging are quite significant. And so if you read some of those mayoral orders, they say they have to pay all the fees that are associated with the discharge that are moving forward. In full disclosure, we've had discussions with Red River Bio Refinery, they want to come back to the city council once the full accounting is done, and they want, they want to ask for a reprieve at, a portion of those fees. So we're working with them on that request, but we have specifically stated that that is a city council declaration that's required, but just so I know, we're working behind the scenes. We've done that once before in my career here. Several years ago, RDO Foods, when they were still in operation, had an issue with their anaerobic digester. They had excessively high rates that they were delivering to it. The city council did give them some grace, as long as they followed through on some other things. So we do have a precedent, just so you know, that's a request that's going to be coming your way. This is your wastewater treatment plant. You can see, we talked about four reactor tanks. There's a building in the, in the middle, which is the distribution building, and in the building with the microbubble flotation system. And if you were here in the late 90s and early 2000s, that was going to be the magic of this whole facility. When we talk about the capacity of this facility, it's those reactor tanks, and there are three blowers inside, in the middle of that building. Those blowers blow air into the system. We have a aeration system, so our, our wastewater treatment plant is based on an aerobic system, not an aerobic system. So when we talk about this facility right now, especially during the startup period, we're running our, our wastewater treatment facility at a, really a high level that we can't race, kind of like an Indy 500. At some point, the 500 miles is up, and you got to, you got to stop the race. At some point, we're going to have to stop the race, because we're running our facility quite hard. These are our lagoons, and you can see where we're at. And if you look right up here, that's our discharge. And so we have a discharge pipe that goes directly into the Red River. And so... And so along the way, I showed some diagrams, too. We can discharge to our wastewater lagoons. We also, thanks to the city council last year, implemented a direct discharge system with a UV light disinfection system. So right now, on a normal day, it goes from our wastewater treatment plant to, through disinfection, through a pipe, and then to discharge right now. But we do have some backup plans, because things happen on a lot of given Sundays for us. These are the requests. So one of the things we're working through at Red River Bio Refinery, and you probably know, before we get in, we talk a lot about when an economic development opportunity comes to Grand, we talk a lot about tax incentives and all those sorts of things, but a lot of these, a lot of that, really the most important thing, is that we have public facilities that can serve these industries. We have a trained staff that knows how to operate them, and we have that in spades. So we're really the big deal. We make a big deal out of tax incentives and banking North Dakota buy-down loans. Really, the big deal is, we have a community that can serve these large industries. And you can see what we've been working through. There was a 2018 request from the industry that was kind of in line with what we were anticipating. We had a recent request in August of 2020 that was well beyond what we could, what we could treat long-term. We could probably do some of these numbers short-term, and then you can see what we're working on, on a longer-term basis, which is more in line with the 2018 request at this point in time. So that's longer-term what we're working through with, with the Red River Bio Refinery. Along the way, on this temporary allocation, as I mentioned, we've been working with Harvey Gullicks and his team on modeling to make sure that we can, we can serve and treat this wastewater in a short-term fashion. So that's what we've done, and that, that has shown up in these emergency orders. Along the way, we've also engaged the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality to, so that they know what we're doing along the way. The mayor has signed two orders, but as per city code, the mayor only has 60 days to execute an order. And the reason why we're here today is that order is going to run out, I think, on September 5th, and the next city council meeting is on Tuesday, September 8th. So we're asking you to extend the current emergency order to October 11th. And there's also in one of the attachments, Mr. Hodney provided us from Red River Bio Refinery, a Gantt chart that shows them going out to get in, fully acclimated through October 11th. And obviously, it's becoming fall, so they're going to start receiving beet tailings from crystal sugar, they're going to start receiving additional potato product, and they're going to be up and going and processing, and it's going to take a while to acclimate, acclimate their, their own pre-treatment system. So that's what we're asking for tonight. Really, we're basing it on existing emergency orders with all that information that we have in there moving forward, and we want to, we want to move forward with that. So again, I talked a lot about this, why is it pandemic-related? That information's in the order. I've already stated a lot of these bullets of what we're trying to do. Along the way, the market changed. You know, we, we had, not only did we have a pandemic that slowed equipment, slowed people to come to get this thing started up, along the way, the ethanol market went bust. And so now, the facility has moved from ethanol that was intended to go to the California West Coast market to a hand sanitizer market, and trying to get that up to the highest level they can, so that they can, they can market that product moving forward. What are the next steps? We're here, and, and Red River Bio Refinery is here to answer any questions. We want you to extend. We're asking you to extend, extend this emergency order that's currently in place under the mayor to October 11th of 2020. We talked a little bit about this a couple of weeks ago, and I think Council President Sandy, who is always, is always a blunt force for goodness, asked, you know, why do we need to do all these facility plan updates? Why we need to do these facility plan updates is that we've added two large customers over the last five years. We've added East, city of East Grand Forks, now we've added Red River Bio Refinery. We want to go back and look at our facility. At the same time, we're going to, most of our debt service is going to be off here in the next few years, so it was, I mean, if you've been here for 20 years with all this debt service we've held on the, it's been, it's been a long haul, so there's good days ahead. However, at the same time, we've got to look at our capacities at our wastewater treatment plant, and we're going to try to maximize, we want to go back to the state and try to maximize how our plant is rated. So maybe we can rate it up even higher than it is currently, and we can say, hey, we've run this facility for 20 years, we think we have additionally, additional rated capacity in our facility. So we want to do that, and then to see what kind of increment we may need to expand the facility, or we need to do some other things. That's what that facility plan is all about moving forward, trying to really max out that car that we have without driving it too hard. And again, finally, I mentioned this, the surcharge rates. We're looking at what we build them according to city code, and I think there's going to be requests, further ask to suspend the, the city ordinance. And what we're really looking at to bring back to, just so you know, we're looking at the incremental cost of what it's cost us to treat this additional and increased load. And so whether that's been power, whether that's been staffing, whether that's been technical assistance, all those kinds of things, that's what we'd bring back. And there's going to be a gap versus what our rate is, our, kind of our penalty rate versus what our, our incremental rate will be. Okay? More to come on that. We're still in the midst of that, but I want you to be aware that that's coming your way also. Now, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Gosstead, so he's, he's been another great team player on this whole thing, and to really reiterate what we're asking you this evening as part of this emergency order extension.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, before we go to the city attorney, could I just ask some clarifying questions?
Yeah, do you want to take a quick question, then we'll let?
Sure. I'll try to make it quick. There's a lot of information. Maybe everybody else in the room understood all of it. I probably missed some pieces. So always a big fan of Red River Bio Refinery. It was a fantastic project. We were excited when it was happening. It was supposed to really get going this spring. COVID hit. Some key personnel were not able to come, some key material or equipment wasn't able to arrive. So we've had higher rates of contaminated water that we've had to process.
I'd say wastewater.
Wastewater. We've, we've had wastewater with higher rates of contaminants that we've had to process. Could you go back to slide five? Specifically on slide five, there were some, I'm guessing contaminants. We're showing what the original request was, especially, I don't know what BOD 5, B-O-D 5, TKN, or TSS are.
BOD is, that's the oxygen it takes to treat the water, another way of to say it.
Okay.
I think biological oxygen demand. TKN is nitrogen, and TS is its total suspended solids. So that's a solids, like a potato manufacturer, you'd have potatoes, and we've got to treat all that stuff.
Oxygen, nitrogen, and solids.
Yeah.
Thanks. And the original requested levels were at one level. Because of these COVID-related problems, the requested level is, is much higher, in fact, beyond what our current limits are. Because we're having to process wastewater that has higher than normal, higher than what our limits would be, it's going to cost us more money. But we're also interested in an important industrial partner, helping them through this unusual period. And we're being asked to extend, support, or approve some extensions on the emergency order and look at some adjustments to our rate structure.
Mayor Bochensky and council member Weber, that's, that's, that's really well said. I'd say the numbers I'm looking at right now, the numbers to the, to my, the far, my right hand, these limits are the limits that we're looking at putting them under more of a permanent permit. Okay? And in the, the middle, the middle numbers are something we've discussed with them.
These, these limits, are they what we accept? They're, they're not what we're putting out in the river. We're not changing what we're putting in the river. We're just willing to change the rates of what we'll accept and then have to process.
Yes, because our treatment plant can only process and treat a certain amount of volume with a certain amount of strength, so that we can, ultimately, everything has to meet our direct discharge permit. That's, that's, that's the goal.
We have to hold that.
That's the goal and the ultimate goal that we have, that we have to meet our permit. And, you know, the state probably says, we thank you for keeping us informed, but at the end of the day, it's our permit, and they got to say, you got to, you got to do what's, what's right and what's best within your limits.
And because of RRB and the East Grand Forks, our equipment is having to work overtime right now. Our people and our equipment is having to run the 500 mile, as you pointed out.
And I think one of the differences, once they, once Red River Bio Refinery gets their pre-treatment system up and going, their levels will go down, so that we can better treat them. But I just wanted to let you know, over the last few years, we've added two large customers that came into us, have used up a lot of our excess capacity at this point in time. So I just want to say, they, we have an interim temporary permit right now that we're asking you to extend, because those limits are really high. Eventually, we will get them in, when their treat, pre-treatment is up and going at full-fledged, and we'll say in October, their limits will be, hopefully, with, they need to be in this area, so we can treat their wastewater longer-term. But during this startup period, we need to help them out, so that their treatment system can get up and going and, and treat that appropriately.
Thanks for your patience, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Phelan, for helping me to understand that. Thank you.
Mr. Gosstead.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor Bochensky and council members, the, we've, I think you've got the, approval and extension that was presented tonight, and that's what we're asking, is simply, several sections that just describe how we got here. Sections 1.1 through, I guess, 1.8 describe the process and how we got here. We issued the first emergency order back July 8th of 2020. That suspended the ordinance that Mr. Phelan spoke about, and that was set to expire on August 15th. And so another emergency order was issued on August 14th that extended the suspension until September 5th. And I advised the mayor that you can't stack these suspensions. You can't issue one suspension of the ordinance and, and then wait for the 60-day period and issue another one on day 59. So the 60-day period would expire on September 5th. And so we're asking the city council, per the city ordinance with respect to suspension of ordinances in emergency situations that you've got here, to extend that past September 5th date. Couple of things I want to add is, we're asking that you approve the factual findings and the background that was set forth in the emergency orders that are identical, with the exception that the second emergency order explains that the estimate by RRB with respect to when they could get their pre-treatment plant up and running was, they miscalculated the timeline when we issued the first emergency, but the rest of the factual background is the same. It goes through in fairly, quite detail as to how they got there. The reason that that's being requested is so that there is some factual basis for your, for your decision. You've got something, it's not an arbitrary decision just to extend it for no reason. So that's the purpose behind adopting those. The extension is unique in that there is a limitation. It's whichever occurs first. October 11th of 2020, the date the city's declaration of public health emergency would expire right now, that goes to September 15th of 2020, unless the council would extend that further. Or the date the permit issued to RRB, RRB under the emergency order would expire. And there is, within the permit, as I understand it, there are some elements in the permit that allows some discretionary decision-making by city staff to terminate that permit if, maybe if they violate the permit, and that, so it could be, you could be extending it and RRB violates that permit, and city staff decides to withdraw or expire the permit. So whichever of those three events occurs first is, is the date that this thing, emergency order would be extended to. If you have any further questions for me, I'd be more than happy to, to answer them.
Do you have something else, Todd?
I'm complete.
I guess I just got one question, I guess one statement here. From my understanding, this is going to do no damage to the life of the plant. We're not putting any worse water, we're within permits on the water, and there's a drop-dead date of October 11th, or if the, the current emergency declaration ends before that, and city staff can terminate this if they violate the permit. Is all, is all that correct?
Mayor Bochensky, that is correct. You know, we've, we've talked to Todd, who's, who's really the man and who discharges, is that, he said, our, we're able right now to take most of the flow, if not all of it, through our wastewater treatment plant, so it gets treated. There was an odor this, this spring and throughout part of the summer, and that was because we had to divert early on to our lagoons, and he said that a lot of that is cleared up, so he feels better, much better today about our effluent and when we start discharging. So I think that's a, a good thing. And, and I think to the maximum of how we're running, if I use an example, we have three blowers that blow air, and we're using all three of them right now, and, and generally, you'd want one as a backup, so if one goes down, you've got two to go off. Right now, we're running everything full bore at this point in time, pushing it through the wastewater treatment plant. So the answer is yes, but we can do it long-term.
Any other questions, Mr.?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve based on city's recommend, city's, city staff recommendation.
Have a motion, have a second?
I'll, I'll second if I could. Is there anything to add, or Todd caught it all? Yep, okay. I'll, I'll second. Very good.
We have a second. Any other further comments? I'd like to say thank you for everybody that came in. That's quite the crew, and you didn't even need to speak. So Todd did a good job.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick question, Todd. So are we, I know Mr. Weber mentioned it earlier, are we negotiating surcharges as part of this, or has that already been figured in with the previous emergency action?
No. Mayor Bochensky and Council President Sandy, that will come next. What we're doing is, just so you know the methodology right now, we're, we're obviously, we are testing, and then we, based on what the water quality is, we would bill it out. It is significant dollar amount, so what we're doing now, we're just, right now, we're tracking what that number is, and then we're tracking what our incremental costs are. Eventually, that's going to have to come back to you for, for final dispensation. I just want to let you know that, because if you read these orders, it says they got to pay all the fees related to that. I, I wanted to give them credit upfront, that they, they do want to ask for a reprieve.
Yeah, and I would just make the friendly suggestion that I, I, I don't think, personally, I don't have an appetite for renegotiating what we've already negotiated. If they want to do a payment plan and pay us back the significant fees, once they get up and running their pre-treatment and amortize it over a few years, fine, I can, I can deal with that, but I don't think forgiving what we've already negotiated, in my opinion, is a good idea. Thank you, sir.
Yep. Mayor Bochensky, I, I think if we could target probably sometime this fall, once it's up and going, we'll, we'll report back on that, and then we'll also be able to demonstrate to you, you know, what, how the West was, won or lost on, on that issue.
So any other questions, comments? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Four point five.
It's the bid award for project number 8241, 2020 Columbia Overpass repairs.
Mr. Grasser.
Evening, Mayor, members of city council. If you remember, this particular item at the committee of the whole, just identified that we're going to have a bid opening between the committee of the whole and the city council. And we did that on Thursday, just last Thursday. We did receive three bidders, and the lowest bidder on that one was industrial builders. The low bid was the amount of $188,690, considerably less than the original engineer's estimates, so we're very happy with, with these dollars. Industrial builders is also familiar with the, the bridge. They did a similar type repair on the south end of the bridge. Well, it's been a while now, eight or 10 years ago, where we've had problems with the, had some issues with the expansion joints there also. I would like to add one, one other item tonight, request for consideration on, on the, on the award. We do know that there's been some additional deterioration of the bridge between the original plans that were prepared by the consultant, and, and today, we don't know exactly what they are, it'll be an exploratory issue when we get into it. The other thing is, I think I'm concerned about, in the future, the availability of the, of the finger joints. Those are specialty construction items, and, and there, and ones, there are a couple of different sizes. One's wide, and one's, one's a little bit narrower, so we need, anyway, so they're not very interchangeable. What I'd like to do with this, along with this contract, is actually order additional, basically a spare set, one of each size, so we have them on hand, just in case in the future, we, you know, we can avoid maybe a, a delivery issue. Wrapping all those discussions together, what I'm going to suggest on, on the, besides recommending a word to the low bidder, is that we consider increasing the engineer, city engineers authority on a change order up to 50% of the bid amount. Just, again, to avoid having to bring this thing back to city council once or twice in the, in the upcoming month or so. That'd be my recommendation, the award and the increase in authority.
Is, is that increase in authority just for this situation?
Just for this particular project, yes.
I'll, I'll move approval.
Any questions or comments? I think we need to get that, that bridge fixed, and I know you've done your due diligence on the fingers, so, so to say, we have a motion, do we have a second? Vice President Mock seconds. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Grasser.
Thank you.
4.10.
Replat, fast track of lots 1 and 3, block 1, Grand City Mallory subdivision located at 1900 South Washington Street.
Mr. Gangler.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we did get contacted on Friday by the applicant. They would like to request that this replat be tabled until March of next year, and it has something to do with the, the former Kmart and some of their, I think, internal negotiations. It does sound like a long time to table it, but I think in this situation, it may warrant. Worst case, if it doesn't come back in that time, we can just start the process over again. So staff is recommending that we table till March of 2021.
Sounds good. You want to do March 1st or March 15th?
Uh, probably the 15th.
All right. Any questions or comments? Mr. President Sandy.
Mr. Gangler, why would we go forward with the rezon and not the replat?
I think the property owner's still intended on, on wanting to pursue that rezoning. It's just that the, the, the plat itself will just lag behind.
I'll move approval.
Yeah, I guess that will, we have a second. Mr. Stockler, I suppose that'll speed up the process later on, so.
It potentially could, yes.
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this affect the, the development that we previously approved in any way?
Say that again?
Does this affect the development that we previously approved this evening?
You know, I haven't had specific conversations of Mr. Curry. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah. Mayor Bocinski, Councilman Weber, no, so the, the rezon, we still want to rezon, the replat, we're tabling mainly to, to maintain the demise premise of the, so there's currently a lease in place, so we can't necessarily, the, the rezon can, can occur because really we're expanding the current, the current leases capabilities. But the replat, we want to currently maintain until another decision is made essentially. So, if that makes, does that make sense?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions?
Point of clarification?
Up, please.
Is it a motion to approve or a motion to table?
It's a motion to table until March 15th.
Yes.
So we have a motion, a second, to table until March 15th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Right.
Motion to table carries. 4.16.
Request to vacate 20-foot wide sidewalk easement at 1510 Charwood Court and 2233 and 37 Springbrook Court.
Okay, I do notice that there are some, there are some folks in the audience that were at the Planning and Zoning Commission that both were speaking for and against the, the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission did deny the request to vacate the sidewalk easement portion of an overall 20-foot sidewalk easement. I'd like to maybe just give a little bit of the history of, of where this started, how it got to be. One of the, the main petitioners has prepared some information that he would like to, to run by the, the council, so if you would allow me to just do a little bit of the history. The map that I currently have, this area of town was platted in 1974, '75, and I think shortly thereafter is when a lot of the homes were built. What I've highlighted in green are individual easement areas that are all identified on the plat as sidewalk and utility easements. If this were to be pursued, the city would not recommend doing away with the utility easement portion. It was just the, the sidewalk that was of concern. So this is kind of a close-up. We're looking at Charwood Court and Springbrook Court, which if I go back to the original map, they're just on the west side of, or I should say, the north side of 17th Avenue South on South 20th. It's the second cul-de-sac going up from the north, or excuse me, from, from the south. So the overall easement I've highlighted, it's 10 feet on each property. Right now, there are two main utilities, there's a sanitary sewer and a water main that cut through each side, so like, again, the city wouldn't even suggest getting rid of, of that. I'll show just a few pictures, kind of explain a few things, and then maybe turn it over to the petitioner who wants to, to address the council. So this, the main petitioner was from 1510 Charwood Court. So we've got a couple different angles, I believe he has some pictures as well. This is looking westerly. So that same easement that I showed, this same easement, that picture is basically at the front of this driveway, looking in a westerly direction. And then same, same shot except from the Springbrook Court side. So in 1982, the city adopted an ordinance that gave the city council the authority to establish sidewalk easements for plats that were approved from that passage of that ordinance onward. Again, that was 1982, this was platted in '74, '75 timeframe. There's a provision in the '82 ordinance that declares that the city council has that authority to do that. However, anything prior to that date would be up to the, the adjoining property owners, should they want a sidewalk, is typically how I think we would look at that. A few more, this is again looking east, there are a few utility boxes. There is the, the one that's right in front of the property, and then there's another one that's basically sort of in between the four side yards, existing trees, and then these are the two larger trees that are on, on Springbrook. So there's a, a lot of history that goes into this area of those easements that I've highlighted on the bigger map. Only the one bordered in red actually has a sidewalk constructed, and no other sidewalks that I'm aware of have ever been constructed within those easements. So it does create a situation where over the years, people have used, I can't speak for all these easements, I'm only aware of, of the, of this one on, off of Charwood. But it has been used, that we've been told over the years. It's unfortunate how it turned out that sidewalk was never put in. We've recently had a lot of conversations, mainly coming out of the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council, about establishing these various types of sidewalk easements, whether they're brand-new on a new plat, or in this case, over the years, I know we've vacated a lot of the easements, and I don't think that's the overall intent citywide to do that. But I think we have to come to terms with, if we're going to keep pursuing these types of access easements, that we more clearly define that once it's platted, everybody has agreed to it, then those sidewalks need to be, need to be installed. With that, I think I will turn it over to Mr. Miller, who's in the audience.
I'm not sure where you guys, where you have it saved at. What's that? Google Chrome. Yep, that one on the left.
Mr. Miller, thank you for waiting the almost two and a half hours here.
No problem. So, thank you for hearing our argument. So, so when I returned from Iraq as a war veteran, I purchased this house in Grand Forks right after college. I never thought that I would have to convince our local government about the importance of private property rights. Life, liberty, and a pursuit of happiness is a core principle of our beautiful republic. For that, I have a God-given right to own private property that no man or government can ever deny me that right. Unfortunately, I am here before my elected officials pleading for my right to private property. When I purchased my house in 2013, I was never made aware of an adjacent easement on my property that connects the two courts. The city nor the previous homeowners never made me aware of the easement in the closing documents or on the deed. A sidewalk was never built in an easement, so it is not clear when the easement starts and private property begins. Additionally, there are utility blocks, utility boxes that block access to the easement. So what do people do when they want to cut between the courts? They go around utility boxes and trespass on my property or the neighbor's property so they can access the easement. Moreover, I am the sole provider for my family. I have been forced to take time off of work to ensure security of our home and by installing security cameras so we can track the random people who access that property. Recently, my fiancee had to call the police on our neighbor because he was taunting, staring, and waving at her through the front window as he, as he walks close to the easement to our house. After the police showed up, he continued his behavior toward us and was eventually arrested for disorderly conduct. Because of his actions toward us and his constant random trespassing, we no longer feel safe in our home. So additionally, I have a, prepared a, a PowerPoint here that kind of goes over the issues that we've been having. Looks like it wasn't beginning here, let me move back. So as Brad stated, it was, it was plotted in 1974. Inside of our subdivision, there are six planned easements. Sidewalks are never installed except for one, as he said. Right after they were plotted and, you know, they were developed, the city never enforced the sidewalk installation. And since then, almost 50 years have passed, and so now, you know, now we have to deal with the consequences of the city never enforcing the, you know, the city code. As you can probably see, that this specific easement is pretty poorly designed. It's my understanding that these homes should have been flipped instead of being placed where they were, where the sidewalks are basically, or the driveways are basically cutting off the easement. And as I said before, this facilitates a, a lot of trespassing. I have a lot of video evidence I'd like to show you guys that, the issues we've been So like I said here, so here, I wanted to point out the utility box. This is, this is the, the sore. This is where, you know, a lot of people come through, especially in the winter time, and, you know, a lot of people, especially in the grass is wet, or there's a lot of snow in the ground, they'd rather use my driveway, which is the easiest access point to access the easement. So like, like I said, I wanted to drive home that we, we want private property, we want to be left alone. We just want to be at our property and just be, you know, live in peace. So as, as you come through, I just wanted to point out, this is how close you get to our front window. We've had instances of window peeking. If we have our windows open, people can hear our conversation or listen to whatever we have on TV, and this is a huge security issue. So as you walk through the easement, as you can see here, this is how close you get to our garage. You have to constantly make sure my garage is closed and our vehicles are locked, because people come extremely close. All it takes is, you know, is I want people to come envious of whatever we have, whatever property we have, and, and go ahead and, and maybe follow through with committing, you know, theft. So I wanted to go through and show you some video evidence to show that they actually have proof that this is actually happening. Looks like that one didn't play for some reason, but here's a, here's some bikers that So this person came through in the middle of the night and, and did a slam dunk on our, So he's another, another random person coming through in the middle of the night, no, I had no idea who this person is, but... So this, this individual came through and not only trespassed, but then littered as Same person, side camera. And there was that pop bottle that he was carrying. So this has been very interesting, this has been one of our biggest ailments. There was a certain neighbor that, that was very persistent that he had, you know, his, it was his right to access, you know, the easement through our private property. And unfortunately, this is, this is one of the videos that instigated us to actually go out and buy security cameras and install them. I wish I had a lot more footage, but this person had used our private property a lot, and drove his bike up and down our street in between our cars to access the easement. So I wanted to point out here, so there's, there's no survey, so I can't, you know, say 100%, but I just kind of want to give a visual, like, what does it look like on the street level? Because I know Brad had showed you some, you know, satellite videos, or satellite, but aerial photos, and I wanted to kind of show you what it would look like from the street. So this is what it looks like, you can kind of tell here that, you know, part of the neighbor's driveway has the easement on it, and if you, if you look through at this angle, you know, you can see that, you know, the utility blocks are blocking it. There's no really, it's the best I can do, but there's, there's no really clear defined where is easement, how do I access it? Do I go around utility box? Is it, is it, is there snow in the ground? Is it wet? So, you know, especially if it's been raining and it's wet outside, they always use our proper, our private property to access it. A different angle here, same thing, utility box. So I wanted to discuss, you know, the hypotheticals. I mean, what if we discussed having a, you know, the, the conversation of installing a fence or installing a sidewalk? So we have the minimum five-foot rule, it's a city ordinance. A sidewalk cannot be installed any, at any, on any, any property or anywhere in a city with a, with a minimum width of five feet. You can see here, because of the utility box, and we're not here protesting utility box, there's no, there's no, any of the utility easements we're protesting, but I just wanted to point out that there's no sidewalk can be installed here because of the utility So another thing is, we want to have privacy, this is stalled fenced in. You know, if we decided to install a fence, it's still not practical solution, because now we have this utility blocks blocking it again. This is, there's no way for somebody to get through and makes it, the easement's not really preferable anymore. So just wanted to point out, it's like, if we came in the middle ground, we put a fence, it still wouldn't work. So I did want to point out the double standard in the community, so there's not very far from us, there is a easement here. Can't tell it's there, but it is. So for some reason, nobody used it, and they, they put up bushes, and no one in the neighborhood even noticed it was there. And I wanted to, so this is, this is the Charwood Court, this is the easement here that we're trying to ask you to vacate. This is the easement that's still in place, right here, that I showed you in that picture. So let's look at some satellite photos. So this is the easement, you know, I pulled this from Google Maps. You can see here that it's the, the bushes block it all the way through, and there's some more bushes here, and, you know, here's the, you know, the continuation easement. I feel bad for, for throwing these property owners underneath the bus, but I kind of have to point this out, that there's kind of a double standard going on here. So let's discuss, you know, what's the alternative routes? What if I, you know, if we did vacate the easement, how far would you really have to go to get to the same point? So, you know, Route A is, total distance is .7 miles. So if you, you know, we live in the 21st century, we can, you know, we can drive a vehicle, so it's a two-minute drive, and if you have a bike, it's a three-minute bike ride, and if you're walking really slow, you can be there in 13 minutes. So Route B, the total distance, and this is that easement that I showed you that, you know, wasn't a forest, but if you're the type of person that wants to walk through people's backyards, you know, there, there is an easement there for it to use. And this one is .47 miles, you know, if you have a bike, it'd take you two minutes or a 10-minute walk, but, you know, since it's in someone's backyard, you can't drive a vehicle, so can't drive. So as in summary, you know, 50 years have passed, the city should have enforced the rules then, not 50 years later, and, you know, and you have this potential of, you know, homeowners like myself that are stuck in a horrible spot, and now we have to come down to city council and, and plead that, you know, that it be vacated. You know, safety and security, huge issue, and, you know, I want to drive home, it's a poor design. So, so I've got a video here for my fiancee, she was not able to attend tonight because she's babysitting our daughter.
Ms. Margaret Reed, and I live at 1510 Charwood Court.
Audio networking.
And my daughter Samantha. Sorry couldn't be there tonight, but I wanted to just advocate not only for my daughter, but for other children.
I may well, we're waiting, I think Greta was gonna maybe look at it. Just as a reminder for everybody, whatever actions are taken tonight, tonight is the time where we set the public hearing for at least thirty days out from tonight. So it won't be the last time this is discussed, but, and Sherry, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that won't be till like the first Monday in October?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gangler, is that assuming that we go along with the original staff request, or is that assuming that, or is that either way?
Either way, because it's a public hearing process that's based in century code, so either way, whatever decision is made tonight, then it follows through with that second, second council meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Gangler, is this easement for a sidewalk to be put in, or is this an easement for people to be able to walk through there?
It, on the plat itself, it specifically says sidewalk and utility easement, so the assumption is that a sidewalk should otherwise be there, but...
This really looks like it can't go there. You know, I mean, I was, I talked to you about this before, and I was probably leaning the other way, and I don't get a vote on it anyways, but, I mean, you have driveways and garages that were allowed to be built there, you have a utility box put there, I mean, all the things that he's talking about. The easement's for a sidewalk to be put in, and a sidewalk didn't get put in. You know, I don't know where we're at. I don't know where the precedent, maybe the, you know, I'd hate to set a precedent, now everyone wants everything vacated, but if we can't put one in either, then, you know, what are we left with? And, you know, maybe Mr. Gosdod can provide some insight on, I know we have the benefit of a real estate adjunct professor at UND as a city attorney, so...
The, I hesitate to provide an opinion on this, Mr. Mayor, just because there is a hearing process. He's put together a, some evidence as to the rationale as to why it should be vacated. And if, I'm not sure, and I haven't looked at this issue, but I know that there is, there is case law and statutes with respect to whether an ordinance can be overcome over a fifty-year period, basically a prescriptive period. But you've got some, as you pointed out, you've got some real issues as to whether this could even be installed. I would encourage that the city council simply set the hearing date so that the evidence can be presented, because that's what tonight's vote is for, is to set the hearing date and let him have the opportunity and let those that, that are seeking to have the sidewalk maintained, or that, excuse me, the easement maintained, present their evidence and let the city council make its decision once the hearing and the evidence is all in. I don't mean to kick the can down the road, but that's the very purpose of the public hearing.
Does an easement in itself mean that the public has access to it? If there's a utility easement there, the public wouldn't have access to it, because it's a sidewalk easement, gives public access with or without a sidewalk?
Generally, when it's plotted like that, it's dedicated to the public in those, in those circumstances. When it appears on the plat, my understanding of the law is that once it appears on the plat, there is a dedication to the city, to the citizens.
So I guess that's the first concern. The second one is the realtor and the real estate, you know, the process to go through and purchase the house without being, you know, made aware of that is probably an issue as well.
And, Mr. Mayor, there's generally, and I don't know what the circumstances were in the closing, but you'd get title insurance or something, some title review. This may not necessarily have hit the radar screen, but there is at least a notion that you're advised that there may be easements, and you should at least take a look at them. Now, I'm not suggesting, however, that that carries the day or doesn't carry the day with respect to this matter. I don't want to indicate, I'm not providing an opinion as to what I think the outcome should be. That should be what the evidence and that's what the hearing should be, but it's something to consider.
Mr. Miller, do you have something else to add before I open up to the council?
Yeah, I wanted to add to the 55% rule. So that means that, you know, if, you know, although property owners did want to install sidewalks, it has to be 55%. I have the exact opposite, all four property owners that are adjacent to the easement have signed a petition to actually vacate it. So I do have that.
What would be taken into account for that as far as the local area? How many, I mean, would it be spread out, mile radius, four hundred feet radius, or does that?
Well, this is, is a...
That's separate.
This is a pretty unique situation, opposed to, for example, the sidewalk in front of most people's homes that live on a dedicated public street. You know, those individual homeowners are typically responsible for their sidewalk. Mr. Grass and I have talked about this specific issue. We've never come across it to this, to this extent, so it is something that would be, I think, at least discussed, because there's, right now, not, I'm not familiar with a special assessment process like you would for a street, for something like a five-foot sidewalk, you know, in this case. But it does, I think, cause us to question how, you know, if the sidewalk were to go in for whatever reasons, ultimately, who pays for it? You know, assuming it's the four immediate property owners, but then is there some kind of assessment district that could, you know, be created?
Mr. Mayor, is it safe to assume that Maggie is gonna say she doesn't want us to put in the sidewalk and it's a safety issue and anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we understand.
Was there any other citizen?
Yeah, I don't know if Greta's ever gonna get us going.
Yeah, yeah, I think we had some other problems.
Well, I'd like, I mean, should we prepare this? I'd like you guys to hear it.
Oh, is it, is it ready?
Let me see if it's working.
All right.
Uh, no, unfortunately, it's not.
Could you email us a link?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, I can send you the link, yeah. I can do that.
That'd be perfect. I think anybody that's waited it out will give a chance to...
I find it ironic that we started the whole evening about people being able to buy homes. I'm nervous. And one of the first things that when you buy a home is your pride, the joy, and the safety that you provide for your, when you buy that house. In this case, as the grandmother, and I do babysit, I don't feel safe because of the fact, and keeping it short, and I remember you, sir, and wondered what the reasons we voted for you, and I knew Mayor Brown. I retired from the military with him. I knew him, so it was no disrespect to him, but we voted for you for change. This is a classic example of what needs to change, because I'm there when I see that. If I'm sitting outside with my granddaughter, and we all know our society has changed, you and I'll have Carrie concealed, and I have nothing against that, but I don't do it, you wouldn't want me to. But if I'm out there and somebody walks through, I don't know if they've got a weapon, I don't know who they are. My son doesn't have the same privilege that I have, because I had a chilling moment when I was backing out of my driveway. My neighbor is here, and we have the same kind of green spot. And I thought, what if that was an easement? And somebody could just walk by as I'm getting in my car, and that's exactly what you see there. It's not just the neighbors. And I got nothing against the neighbors that have bought their homes and have lived there forever. They've used it. But this person wasn't told the easement was there, so that was deceiving. But I have, and this is what my son doesn't have, is the ability, and that's why I'm saying, think of yourself as the homeowner on this house. I have, and just like most of you probably do, the ability to call the police, because I had someone that walked through my driveway and my neighbors, and we actually have a gate in between, you know, our garages in the back. But somebody walked through, it was, had to have been eighty-some degrees, but he had a stocking cap and everything on. Well, that freaked me out, but what did I get to do? Call the police and do a safety check. He can't do that, because anybody who walks down his driveway has a right to. So he, so we as a city is denying him his safety right to, or me, if I'm over there, to call the cops. You know, because anybody has a right to walk through there, anybody. And that's what I'm trying, we live in different times nowadays, and we all got to know that. We see it in the news. Fargo used to be a really safe place. Grand Forks has had its issues. Even these smaller, I grew up in a small town. I didn't grow up in Grand Forks, but I grew up in Naked, Minnesota. You didn't have crime in these little towns. You do now. So if you continue to allow this easement, because of the distance, we, you know, that's wide, and somebody made a comment last week, because I watched the minute last week, that the houses, first of all, built wrong for this easement. The house should be tilted this way and not this way, so that when everybody walks through, they can see you. Well, okay, I can, I can fix that. I can close my curtains. So I have to live in the dark to prevent people from looking into my house. That's what I'm asking you. As a homeowner, would you want to live like this? Because I think we need to take it out of the element of just my son. This is, what if this was your house? Would you feel comfortable, especially with kids? Because some of these houses and neighborhoods for a while, and I, because I live over in the UND area, didn't have kids. Well, the kids, those young families now that we talked about at the beginning of the meeting are buying these homes, but we want to make sure they're safe. We don't want to put them in a predicament that somebody's walking through in, like in the middle of the night, and if you confront them, you know, and they're on your driveway, literally on your driveway, you don't know if they're concealed. You don't know that. So I'm asking you to take into the consideration the fact that the times have changed, and I, as a senior too, need to, and that's why we voted young. We need to move forward, we need to accept change, and think of everybody. We can't stay locked in the past. This is the past, this was a mistake the city admits they made, but don't make my son pay for it. They did admit they made a mistake in the way the house was built. City inspects every time they build, you build something, like when I wanted to rebuild my garage, and you bought property to keep something from going on where you live. I know this. I don't have anything against that, but I'm saying, take everybody into consideration. Not everybody has money to fix the problem. But when I was building my garage, I got a phone call immediately, because they stopped it. They said my house was on the property. That's the city. So I know the city is involved in every planning issue, so the city had to have known from the get-go that this was wrong. And my neighbor, building, and found out my house was not, my garage was not on the property line. I could have the entire garage torn down, but they were going to prevent me from doing that one wall on my garage, and this was the city. My neighbor next door, he's got this much behind his garage, because when he poured his cement, he didn't realize that he went past the boundary line that he could pour the cement for a garage. So now he has this. So the city is involved. So I find it hard to believe that the city didn't know that this was a mistake from the get-go in where this box is. There's no way you can put a sidewalk unless you put it in somebody's driveway. Then they're not gonna use that, they're gonna still use this driveway. So I'm asking you, as homeowners, if, put yourself in the predicament of this house. He's done remodeling? You put a sidewalk there that anybody can walk by and see into this house? He's never gonna be able to sell that house. That's not fair as a property owner. We should all be able to buy a home, feel safe, feel pride, then you say, okay, I want to move on, and buy another house. How's he sell this house? And that's what I'm saying. Take it personal inside each one of you, if this was your place.
Thank you.
That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. I think we can hear a couple from the neighbors too. I mean, we're all, we're all have to do this again at the public hearing, but, you know, you guys waited, so if you keep them brief, but, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moszynski and Councilman. I live at 2221 Springbrook Court. I've lived there for forty-two years, and why we bought that house there is I walk through that easement every day to work. I work at 1506 South Washington. And over the years, the driveways got developed, and we've never had a problem until this carport was put in. And my wife and I, we walk every night, and we walk through there, and we walk to the neighborhoods. And Mr. Miller decided he's gonna put them no trespassing signs. And so he blocked the easement all summer, and he had his neighbor arrested for trying to walk through there. It's craziness. An easement is for the public good. It's not for any one person's good. And this is encroachment on a public, public easement. I have no problem walking through there, but I don't appreciate the no trespassing signs. What's done to our neighborhood, it's killed it. We, all the kids, the families, don't walk through anymore. And this is, easements are supposed to connect neighborhoods. And his issue is because he put his carport out there and has blocked the easement. So that's what I have to say, it's, he's killing the neighborhoods. Thank you. You should have, Mr. Gangler.
Well, he's directing, so you're up, I guess. What's your name, sir?
My name is Ron Holler. I live at 1518 Charwood Court in Grand Forks. I'm Mr. Miller's neighbor. There's a house between us. I'd been there for thirty-seven years and had no problem coming through that easement until he moved back from Texas. And he sits there in the window, and we can't see in because the windows nowadays are black or tinted, but he sits in there, and if you don't come through there at a certain way that he likes, he calls the cops, and he called the cops and me, and said that he didn't like me coming through there because I'm looking at the window. We had no problem before for thirty-seven years, until he moved in. And the problem isn't that it's too close to his place. If you go and look at that easement, 2237, it's about four feet from their patio door. Go down, if you have the time, go down there and look at that. And that is, if you're, if you're over in Springbrook Court looking east, they made that easement ten feet on each side. It's perfect, until you get over here in Charwood Court. I'm not blaming the city, but they let them pour a slab on a single driveway and a single garage, and they tried to close that easement down by putting in a slab. And if you go over there and look at it, there's a concrete wintergreen court, 2210. That one's concrete. That one's wart next to the house, about seven feet away from their side of the house, and they got an entrance door coming in and out. I go through there with the bicycle or walk, no problem, until you come through 1510 Charwood Court, and he's standing there. I got pictures. I sent all my pictures to Kevin Bean. He's got all the information. He's got the police report, and I don't know what else to say. I'll let, I'll let you take care of it, and thank you very much.
Yep, well, thank you.
At the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Wasvik, he used to be our neighbor on Springbrook, and he said he personally has walked through that easement thousands of times himself because his friends lived in Charwood. And his solution to the problem, which I hadn't thought of, he said it's nothing to get those boxes moved and pour a sidewalk in. He said that would cure the problem right there. Everybody would know where to walk, they wouldn't be trespassing, and there's still, there's a twenty-foot easement in there. And he said moving the boxes would be no problem, and that was his solution. And, you know, my son went, all the kids in the neighborhood right through there to go to school, and that easement was heavily trafficked, told the no trespassing signs. So it's craziness. Thank you.
Yep. Let him finish here, and then we'll, we'll give you just a couple, but like I said, this is gonna be played out again here at the public hearing, so...
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Miller, thank you for your service to our country. My name is Manish Rami. I am at 2230 Springbrook Court. I've lived there for twenty years and raised two girls. And my girls went to Ben Franklin, and they walked through there, and they rode bicycles through there, and went to the public library. And for twenty years, we haven't had any problem until I hear about Mr. Miller. It is unfortunate that the realtor did not inform you, lack of due diligence on the part of the realtor and the purchaser. For the sake of one or two families, I think several families should not suffer. I am sorry that you have to suffer through this, but I don't know what the solution is. But the easement, which is meant for public use, ought to be open. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, if you want something real quick, go ahead, but then, you know, we got ten seconds, fifteen seconds, we gotta, we gotta move on. got ten seconds, fifteen seconds, we gotta, we gotta move on.
So, I just wanted to make it noted that I, I haven't built anything on that property, so the property, you see it today, is, is how I purchased it, so I personally haven't put any slabs on there, or built a, built a garage or anything to, you know, to block the easement, so I just, I just wanna make that clear, that, that wasn't, that wasn't me, that was the previous property owners, and it was my understanding that the previous property owner actually wanted to build, well, you, you see the wider slab that's on there? He actually put the slab down, and then, this is obviously hearsay through someone else, I have no way to say one hundred percent this is factual, but he wanted to build a garage, and that's when he found out there was an easement there, and, and he basically was fed up and sold the house, and that's where, unfortunately, that's where I came into this, this situation, and I did not have, also, I did not have Ron arrested for trespassing, it was for disorderly conduct, and his actions toward us, and he was waving, and yes, he could see us in the window, and yes, he waved at us, at my fiancee, as he was walking through, and his other actions that he did in front of the police officer did lead to him being arrested, so it was not for trespassing.
Thank you. So I guess what we're looking for now is, is a motion to move forward to the public hearing? Is there any, let's, let's, I guess, let's get a motion first, and then we'll...
I think the appropriate motion would be to uphold the recommendation of the county, or the Planning and Zoning Commission's to not vacate the easement, and I will make that motion.
Okay. And with that, that'll move us on to the public hearing, and you'll have, I mean, there's, there's nothing there now that we can do to change that, so, do we have a second? Second for Mr. Weber, any other comments? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion will carry. Um, just for clarification, that was really all we had available to us tonight? We've just set that, so we'll go through this all again at the, at the point of the...
We just wanna know, is it finalized?
No, no, no.
Oh, I thought you guys just finalized.
No, it's, yeah, there's still a public hearing process, and what's, Mr. Gossett, can you explain it to them?
And whenever the public, I don't know if you've said it tonight, but whatever the date to the public hearing, they can present their evidence, and the board can confirm, or not confirm, or change his mind at the date of the public hearing. I would, I will provide some, at least an email with legal analysis, and some of the issues that I've written down, based upon what I've heard tonight, with respect to use of the easement, dedication to the plat, so the council is, is aware of that at the time of the, the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, it's an impossible situation, there's no doubt about that, so, we'll hear it again.
And I just confirmed with, with Sherry, October fifth would be that first available council meeting after the thirty-day minimum advertising.
So you'd be back October fifth? All right, you got that? All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, let's see here. Informational items, number five, Marine.
If I could just back up real quick, Mayor Bocinski, we just need a motion to introduce ordinance for four point one-three.
We have a motion to introduce ordinance, four point one-three, yes. Sandy, President Sandy, second by Ms. Mock, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
All right, and five point one, investment portfolio summary as of July three-first. And we did not receive any citizen comments other than what's attached to your agenda.
Sounds good. Seven, approval of minutes and bills.
Seven point one, vendor list and engineer's estimate as presented.
Any conversation, we have a motion to pay the bills, motion by Mr. Wagel, second by Mr. Sandy. Any other comments? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Uh, seven point two.
And the minutes from July sixth.
We have a motion, it was from Mr. Sandy, second from Ms. Doppler, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Todd, do you wanna add, like, hour-long comments tonight?
No, I won't, I do, I do wanna say thank you for all your attention this evening, we've plowed through a lot of things, and we're trying to get things moving, so, we appreciate that. And finally, I appreciate all the city staff and all the work that goes behind, behind the scenes, and we show up here for a few hours, but there's a lot of great work that goes on all the time, so, thank you for your attention tonight, though.
Thank you, sir. Nine, we have council member, mayor, council member comments, council members in large, any comments? We'll go to Ms. Mock, and then we'll go to Dana, anything, Ms. Mock?
If Mr. Gangler is here, it'd be nice to check into what it would take to move that utility box.
Looks like he's gonna tell us now.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
He'd, should like you to look into that, what it would take to move the utility box if a sidewalk got put in there. I don't know if that's gonna make everybody happy, but it's something.
Yeah, yeah, we can, I'm sure we can get an estimate from somewhere.
So, thank you. Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Gangler, don't go away. So, just for, point of process, because I'm trying to understand exactly what we did with the last item. If Planning and Zoning Commission moved to deny the vacation, and the council moved to deny the vacation, why exactly are we having a public hearing?
I think, to be, to be fair to...
Whomever, anybody. Reality, what do you think?
I think it, President Sandy, I think in, because there is a, a party that has petition to have this presented, I can't remember the gentleman's name.
Mr. Miller.
Yep, Mr. Miller, petition to have it. Tonight was to present, and you can reject it, but he, I think he's still, for due process and for process rights, I think he's entitled to a hearing, even though you've rejected it, because you haven't had the public hearing yet.
Let's just make sure we get that right, I don't, I wanna make sure...
Yeah, well, I'm confused why we're having a public hearing if we're voting to have a public hearing, that's all. And, sounds good, no problem. One other thing, a couple other things, the, the housing down payment process, again, I think we had a good discussion about it, although, I am a guy that likes to study things, and I know the mayor's an action guy and wants to move things forward, I am a little concerned that providing funding to help people buy houses may actually exacerbate our housing shortage problem. We have a housing shortage, we know that. I, I sat on two housing commissions to, to work on that, and so I am a little bit concerned that we may cause our own supply and demand problem, or exacerbate our, our current problem. But the most astounding thing that I heard tonight, of all things that we went through, was the fact that Mr. Feelings is actually considering expanding our wastewater treatment plant. After all of the discussions we've had for ten years about how we have all of this excess capacity, and things are great, and we need to go out and sell this excess capacity, we get East Grant Forks, and we get Red River Bio Refinery, now, we're actually, by doing that, having to expand our wastewater treatment plant. That can't actually be possible.
I think that's just in time inventory, is that how that works, Todd?
It's just in time, well, it, we're gonna pay the debt service off in twenty years, and it may be an expansion, maybe some new equipment, new ways of treating that we could add additional capacity, yeah. And, you know, if you look a lot at community, we haven't grown that much on a residential perspective, but if you look at some of these industries, well, we added seven thousand people, eight thousand city into our system.
So, so we all understand, my thought process, the reason to get East Grant Forks, and the reason to get Red River Bio Refinery is to spread the costs out over more users. I haven't seen my wastewater bill going down, I've seen it continue to go up, and now, now that we've added all these additional users, we're talking about spending additional Dax Bayor dollars to make the facility bigger, that's not bringing my, my costs down.
I think we committed to...
That's a rhetorical comment.
I know, but we committed to a study, and we don't know what the outcome of the study is.
I know that.
All right, any other comments, Mr. Sandy? I, it'd be hard to follow that up. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work, I think it was a productive meeting, I think you have, a situation like this are tough, you know, there's tough deal, tough thing to deal with, and not everyone's gonna be happy, that's part of the job. So everyone have a good night, and we'll see you in a few weeks. Oh, wait, we need to adjourn the meeting, sorry. Do we have, do we have a motion? Mr. Sandy, motion is about Doppler's seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned, just got ahead of myself there.
Everyone, everyone move.
We're all out of here, we're out of here.